I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we'll have a roll call. John Crist, the Chair, is going to be late this evening. He won't be here till around 7:00. So I am the Vice Chair, Sue Wood, and I will be doing the meeting until he gets here. So Phil is excused. Neil MacIver is excused. Mike Ahern.
Here.
Matt Yeton.
Present.
Michael Bouchard is also excused. Zach Tyrell.
Here.
Bradford Puffer.
Yep.
Molly McCann.
Here.
Jason Ninos, who is also excused. So the review of the minutes from February 6th. Have you all had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any changes or anything that you'd like to make note of?
And we are short three. We have three open seat, regular member seats. So we could seat our two alternates as well.
Okay.
To fill in for two of those anyway.
Okay, so I'll seat Bradford Puffer as a voting member tonight. And Molly McCann. Okay. Thank you, Joseph.
I have two really, really minor things in the minutes on page four of what I'm holding. On the last paragraph referring to the natural resources study, I believe it's called a natural resources inventory. Just to be consistent across our minutes. And then on the last page, page five, the first paragraph, when it's talking about, the board emphasizes the need for public input and striking a balance on specificity in areas such as Tenney Mountain. Do we want to specify whether we're referring to Tenney Mountain Highway or Tenney Mountain, the ski mountain? Because I wasn't sure. I'm not sure if I remember which area we were talking about specifically.
Those are the last sevens on page four first.
Correct.
Carried on to page five.
Yes.
I believe that was Tenney Mountain Highway.
Okay.
If I'm remembering that conversation correctly.
Maybe we could specify, just so there's no confusion.
Yeah, good catch.
Thank you. Those are the only two things I saw.
Okay. Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
I can do that now. I can make, I make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as noted for February 6th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you. Communications received by the board.
Yes, we have a few communications here, and one of them was able to make it into the packet. This is a letter from Stuart Hanna. And then also I'll just briefly touch on the other two communications. We have a communication from Mario of Brown Engineering and Colby Lenantine asking for review of their application to be moved to the end of the meeting. And then we also have a communication from Ian of Hess Engineering with a few comments that pertain to the Yeton Road Site Plan Review Application.
Okay. Does any, should I read this letter first, or should we address the movement of the Colby Lenantine's application? Does anyone have any problem with moving that to the end of the meeting?
No.
Okay, then we'll do that. And the letter that we received was from Stuart Hanna regarding the Tenney Mountain Overlay District. And it reads, "Planning Board, this is Stuart Hanna of 77 Eagles Nest Road, Plymouth, New Hampshire, and I'd like to raise an issue for your consideration in response. I've been paying close attention to the meetings as they relate to the Tenney Mountain Overlay District, and for the most part, any feedback I would have to offer has been addressed by the Planning Board members, members of the community, or the developer. Recently, I took issue with a member of the Planning Board not excusing themselves from the recent vote, Michael Bouchard. Mike was deeply involved with the ski mountain for several years, advocating for broad investment in the mountain. I had witnessed several times where he indicated he was invested in the project. At that point, I noticed he appropriately excused himself from board activities, wilts firmly supporting the investment and development activities. At certain points in time, he actually represented the mountain at meetings. But since Mike moved on from his formal involvement with the mountain, it appears that he no longer excuses himself. This might be acceptable if it's not for the fact that it appears Mike has also reversed his support for the overlay district and development activities at the mountain as signaled by his no vote to move forward with the overlay district. It's difficult for me to understand why he voted no, because I've not witnessed Mike speaking with any detail during meetings to explain his objections. He's largely remained silent. Therefore, I can only make an assumption that Mike has a personal issue given his departure from the mountain, which has influenced the reversal of his support. I don't require any action to be taken per past events, but I would appreciate a response from the Board Chair explaining how potential conflict of interests can be avoided moving forward. Regards, Stuart Hanna." So do we have the Chair respond to him in writing, or how do we proceed with that?
The board could designate some kind of written response, or could respond verbally in its discussion. If the board wanted to make something more formal, they could perhaps have someone draft something. But I think it would also be appropriate for the response to be just the board's discussion of the matter and so captured in the minutes.
Okay. All right. I do have the RSA regarding recusing oneself from meetings that I'll hand out to everyone so that you've got it for your records, so that you know how to proceed in the future, just for your own information. And I think Joseph also printed off something for everyone to have.
Yep, just a quick copy of a article. It's from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And it just gives some general guidance on the RSA and questions surrounding recusal. The article's called "I Recuse Myself," and it is from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, 2013. So just a good general overview, anyway.
Okay, Mike.
Can you give us a couple of minutes to review this before we move on?
Sure.
To read it?
Absolutely.
Yep. So a general question, I don't know if anybody here can answer it. Judicial capacity. We have two responsibilities as a planning board member. One is the regulatory phase of being on a planning board versus application reviews and approvals, non-approvals. So I'm wondering what judicial might mean in that sense.
Are you're the RSA?
Yeah. So when the board is acting in its sort of judicial or quasi-judicial capacity, that's the capacity in which the board is directly applying situations, regulations to an application. So review of a site plan application, or a subdivision application, or something of that nature, kind of a judicial-like.
And that's what I, that's what my thinking is, reading this, because when we talk about the Ag Zone, I'm co-chair of the Ag Zone Committee, I don't step back for voting on that. So I don't know if that, what that means, but just throwing it out there.
I know that there was a situation when the hotel was going to, was presented to the board. I was in a position where I needed to seek some legal counsel to find out if I should recuse myself or not, not understanding the true meaning of it. And what he told me was, as long as you feel like you can make a decision that is not unbiased, then it's entirely up to the person whether or not they recuse themselves. So I felt that I just, it was appropriate for me to do it at the time. So it really is, I think, according to the attorney, is that it's really up to the individual to decide whether or not they can make the appropriate decision.
And I've stepped back many times. Well, a couple of different times with an application for, that's looking for an up or down vote. And then some I've stayed on. So, but that's entirely different than what a regulatory review would be, where I haven't stepped back.
And it does, the article does specifically, you know, to your point, which is correct, that, you know, the final decision is left to the member with the alleged conflict or bias. So it is, like you said, a personal decision for that member. The board does have the right to take a request, a non-binding advisory vote. That member could ask for that if they're uncertain about whether it would be appropriate or not, but ultimately, they would, they would have to make the, make the final call.
Which even if that vote is made, it's non-binding regardless.
Correct.
Yep.
I think the direct financial interest is pretty cut and dry, but the direct personal interest is less cut and dry about, you know, the question of, should you recuse yourself? Or let's see, this article says, "The basic rule is that a conflict of interest requiring recusal will be found when an official has a personal or pecuniary financial interest in the outcome of the matter." Again, I think the financial interest is pretty straightforward. If you own a business and you're going through site plan review on the business, you should recuse yourself. But whether you have a personal interest or not is a little more gray.
I agree with that. The financial is pretty.
Pretty clear.
Easily defined.
The advice I got from Val Scarborough when I first joined the Select Board was, if you ever feel like you're coming close to that line, just recuse yourself. Because there's no reason, there's no reason to tiptoe up to the edge of that. Instead, just say, "There could be a perceived conflict here. I'm just not going to get involved."
That's sort of what.
Exactly. That's exactly what happened to me.
The bridge thing.
Right.
I think it's probably a matter for our attorney to review this.
In this particular instance, our attorney did review it.
Oh, okay.
And the regulation says, as Sue said, the individual makes that decision. And the individual made the decision. There's no, there's no legal concern in this particular instance.
Okay.
Whether or not that there's an ethical, moral, you know, we can't see into that individual's head, and so I don't think we can judge on that in particular, but it is a good reminder for everybody to.
Was there, Zach, was there?
No, go ahead.
Was there, did he have any type of distinction whether regulatory review versus application review?
He didn't. And I think that's because this particular piece that Sue shared is about the vote on the disqualification, which is in addition to the advice around recusing yourself when serving on a board. Because that, recusing yourself speaks more to conflict of interest, and that's, that's not, that's not this. I mean, this obviously relates to conflict of interest, but choosing to recuse yourself is, I think it's covered under another RSA on conflict of interest. I'm not sure which one, though, off the top of my head.
So anybody else, or is that, we have it in the minutes? Now, Joseph, will you send him a copy of the minutes, or will you, how will you? Has he specifically asked for something from the Chair?
Yeah, I can certainly respond and advise that the board discuss this at their meeting.
Okay.
And that the video indoor minutes could be available if that's, if that's how everybody wants to proceed. I haven't, definitely, that's not a problem at all.
Just that he's asking for a response, so I think we should do something.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, so if that's all set for everybody, we'll move on to Site Plan Review Application for Yeton Road. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
The application?
Yes.
So the application has, everyone's reviewed it, and do you feel it's complete?
I see that there are a couple things missing. The signage information, which I had a question for Joseph about when I was reviewing the application requirements. It wasn't clear to me that signage information was required, and it might just be that in the shuffle of paperwork, I wasn't sure where that's listed, and now I'm lost in my paperwork right now, actually, so.
Quick look at which, which number that is.
Right.
Here it is, number checklist, item number 16, location, size, design, and illumination of proposed signs, and other advertising or instructional devices.
Okay, so on this application, that's checked off as being present, but then when we look at the application, is it present? Is something that's?
And just so the board knows, I do address that in my narrative.
Oh, do you? Okay, we can, we can let him talk, maybe. I don't know.
Okay, is there anything else we could address at all at once?
Guardrails. Did we get a communication, an email about that, though?
Yes, we did. Guardrails, that's also addressed, and they are, they were on the plans, it's just the line type, could be tough to see.
Okay.
Last thing, snow storage?
I address that also in my narrative, and we can tweak the plan to highlight it better. But it is, we have plenty of room for snow storage in the four acres of floodplain.
Okay, so Joseph, should I read the summary for the public, for the general public, so they know what this is about?
Probably not a bad idea.
All right, this is an application for a site plan review from Hess Engineering and Construction Consultants to develop two commercial buildings on parcel 213-014 on the easterly side of Yeton Road. The proposed development also includes associated site improvements to accommodate the development, including parking, utilities, circulation, and stormwater improvements. The property lies within the agricultural zoning district. So do you want to cover the things that they addressed for the?
Yep, so the site signage, it will be building-mounted, not fully designed yet, or decided size. So we would come back to the board for the site signage. And if we wanted to put something up by the road, obviously, we'd have to come back for that as well. But since it's a DOT road, we'd have to get their approval first.
On Tenney Mountain Highway?
Well, Yeton Road is a DOT road, too.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. Wow.
I learned that on this project.
Okay. So did I.
Mike?
Before we accept the application as complete, if the applicant could give a little brief history on where we were a few months ago versus getting to today, and a brief overview of the materials that you have to show us, and then we can go from there.
Yep, so I presented, I thought it was a few months ago, too, but it was a year ago almost, to the day. So originally, we had had two buildings going in that were going to be mixed-use apartments on top, commercial on bottom, and the projects were going to be two phases. Financially, it just didn't work. We're going to build both commercial buildings now, they won't be mixed-use, no apartments, single-story. We also were able to address, because we had submitted the wetlands permit before, and we had a big pond over here. They didn't like it. We could have gotten it permitted, but it's always nice to keep the DDS happy and do what they feel. So we've actually moved the drainage up to where the great soils are, and are doing underground detention system underneath the parking lot. Those are the major changes. So access to the site will only be during business hours now. You won't have people coming and going as you would with an apartment. We have revised a DOT permit application to represent that, just so we get the application cleared. The buildings are very similar in size, slightly different than they were before footprint-wise. We're just not going to have the second floor.
And this is a brand-new application?
This is a brand-new application, so we've gone too long, so we have to come back a full new resubmission.
Yep.
So I'd say, looking at the materials that we have, I would make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Okay. Would anyone like to second that?
Do we need a waiver for the signage information? Just because it's not in the application? I understand that it's on the building. Do we need a waiver for that still, even though it's on the building?
Yeah, so the board could decide, yeah, the board could, could decide to grant a waiver on that particular question as a submission requirement waiver. That would be a possibility, or the board could accept the application and then address that in the review of the design as well. The board could kind of handle that either way.
Is you a conditional approval on that?
That would be an option.
Yep.
So how does the board want to proceed with that?
We can discuss lighting after acceptance, right?
Yes.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed and abstentions? Okay, so the application has been accepted. Sure, I would love to have you join, John.
Oh, hey, John.
Hi, John.
John, I took over your space. Sorry. I think the main concern I have about the application is that the building use isn't specified. Okay. I'm confused about order of operations here, I guess, now that we have R.
I would say.
So now that we've got the application is, we can, do we open it up to a public hearing on this, for the site plan review? Or do we allow, you can go ahead and go over it, over the whole thing?
Yep, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
As just discussed, it consists of two commercial buildings totaling roughly 7,588 square feet of footprint. The proposed uses is an office space down here for Comfort Keepers, who currently resides, actually, at 12 Yeton Road. And then main flooring, which also resides over here at 12 Yeton Road. So we're going to be just moving the two businesses across the street. The main flooring one will consist of a showroom and then just storage for his materials. And this, and Comfort Keepers will just be office space.
So in this current setup, it's one business per building?
Yep, this is main flooring. And this is Comfort Keepers. Main flooring actually has some access here with the garage doors, just to be able to bring his materials in and store it.
Will that main flooring be wholesale or retail?
Retail. They're going to have a, like a showroom, yep. Yep, similar to what he has in 12, 12 Yeton Road. There should be no change in flow and traffic, obviously, we're moving two buildings, you know, they're going to lose two units over there. Commercial rental isn't going quick, so I can't imagine they're going to fill them tomorrow. Like I said, the signage is building-mounted. We haven't finalized the design yet, but obviously, we'd have to bring that back to the board. And then if we did decide to put anything by the road, we would have to get DOT approval as well. We're going to build everything in one phase, unlike the last one, last time, we were going to build one building first, fill it, see how it goes, and then build the second commercial. We've switched the drainage from the pond that we had over here by the wetlands to an underground detention system. The drainage is able to handle up to a 50-year storm and will not fail under 100-year storm for the town requirements. There's also a drainage report that has been provided, full drainage study. With the smaller configuration, we are able to reduce the parking area, which actually reduced our pavement and got rid of a lot of retaining walls and work right near the floodplain. Sewer will be serviced, actually, by a manhole down here. We tried to tie into this manhole, but the grates just didn't work. So the sewer will be serviced, there'll be these few manholes, and we're going to come in and tie in down in this manhole. And that's the reason for the wetlands permit, is we need to cross the wetlands. Like I said, we've already addressed all the wetlands concerns. It's gone back in the RMI. Cindy Valseas thinks she'll have an approval in the next couple of weeks on that. DOT has gone back in, I don't see one taking very long to get this approval back either. Both buildings will be serviced by propane. There'll be one drilled well to service both buildings. So here's our guardrail. I know it was a concern, and we can definitely call it out better if it need be, but it is shown by the slope at the back of the parking lot. Our snow storage will also be kind of pushed through the guardrail and be down in this area over that slope. We will run Cape Cod berm around the entrance, asphalt sidewalks. Power will be serviced from the pole up here and coming underground to both buildings. I think, pretty much covers all of it. Yep, it's, you know, we have an island here, we require 31 spots, we've provided 31 spots.
Can you speak on lighting for a moment?
Yeah, lighting will just all be building-mounted downward-facing. Lighting was more of a concern when it was going to be residential, but now it's really just winter months where it's even going to be an issue. But yeah, it'll all be just wall-mounted, and I think there was an architectural plan that showed some lighting. But yeah, just building-mounted downward cutoff lights as required by the town.
Great, thanks. Do you feel there's enough landscaping on the end where you're going to be pushing the snow, so that as the snow melts, it's not going to melt into that brook in the back there? Or into the wetlands, because of the salt?
Well, we have such a distance of floodplain behind that slope that it'll not be an issue. I don't think it'll end up in those. I mean, well, eventually, everything ends up there, but.
Okay.
And this is actually, from here down, is all type A soils, beautiful sand that everything flows right through.
And there is an existing tree line that you're going to leave that there, anyway?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we got to cut back just this tiny bit right here to get that little corner of the parking lot. And we were able to eliminate all the retaining walls, which is always nice for safety and cost, and grade everything out. There's one little one by the building, but that's it.
Okay, does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Hess?
So you're pushing the snow basically into the wetland off the parking lot?
Not the wetland, floodplain. There's no wetlands until you get way down to Mel Brooks. It's just, it's the slope down to where the floodplain is, but it's not the wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah. No, the wetland, the only wetlands are up here and over here.
Okay. Trying to envision the site, that's all. I believe you, I was just wanting to confirm.
If we don't have any more questions at this point, we can open it up to a public hearing?
I do have actually a question, Sue, sorry. Do we need to confirm the usage on the plan somehow to make sure that the usage, uses of the site comply with the zoning ordinance really clearly? And also, do we need to think about the uses in relation to the potential amendments at town meeting?
So to my understanding regarding amendments, that the proposed amendments currently rule, sort of?
Yeah.
If you will?
Yeah, yeah.
Any further information, I'd refer to John.
Yeah, he's not seated yet, though, we see.
Well, and if the, if it was wholesale, if it was used for wholesale, we would have to wait until after the vote.
Because it wouldn't be permitted.
But for retail, we're okay. So if it gets approved tonight, then they can move forward.
Okay.
If retail isn't permitted under the new zoning.
It's special exception.
They would stop to go for a special exception.
If it's voted in.
If it's voted in, correct. But we don't know if it will be or not, of course.
But right now, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
Is that correct, John?
I need to seat John.
Oh. I would like to seat John as a voting member and soon to be the chair.
And I will say, just to add the forward to that or follow-up to that, that I will happily join this discussion, although because I missed the beginning, I don't think I should probably vote. I think I should probably recuse from the vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I might just defer to Joseph on this. I believe anything that we have out can impact any considerations at this point, and...
Can or cannot?
Can. In terms of moving forward with getting a building permit and all that. Joseph, do you want to clarify?
Sure, yes. So RSA 676:12 does specify that the building inspector shall not issue any building permit within the one-twenty days prior to the annual or special town meeting if application for such meeting is made after the first legal notice of proposed changes in the building code or zoning ordinance has been posted, and the proposed changes would, if adopted, justify refusal of said permit. So in essence, at the building permit phase, that's where the building inspector would have to wait essentially until an amendment is resolved and would hold off on issuing that permit. The board could address...
So it could be a condition of approval to get a special exception if that passes?
Okay.
I would agree.
Okay.
Which proposed amendment?
That would be the citizen petitioned amendment to the table of uses.
Article two, the first article on the ballot.
Warren Article Two.
Warren Article.
Warren Article Two. Petitioned zoning change.
Correct.
Citizen petitioned Warren Article Two.
The language is confusing. On the ballot, it's the first article that shows up, but technically, it's article number two. So you are correct.
Zoning Amendment Two versus Warren Article Two. But it is the petitioned one from the community, not the one from the planning board.
Correct.
And I believe is that Article Four is zoning Amendment Two or something like that?
That sounds right.
Something like that.
Because number one is the election.
Correct.
Okay. So is everybody all set? All right, so which one is it?
Seven oh three.
I will open the public hearing at seven oh three. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments or anything? Oh, boy. Close it at seven oh three. Okay, so now, how does the board want to, how do we? Any more comments about putting this together? To approve? Conditions?
Go ahead.
Can I ask, previously, when we were considering this, we asked for an engineering review of the stormwater plan. I don't know if we still feel that way with the revised plans or not, and based on your discussions, that I wasn't fully here for, but...
Stormwater has changed to catchment?
Yeah, it's all in the... And actually, if you...
Subterranean?
Yep, it's all catchment chambers under the parking lot. Their storm tech said we two-hundreds, like I said, we needed to be able to hold a hundred-year storm without failing.
Yep.
We are further, I know a concern last time, it's our closer to Millbrook, now we've moved the parking away, our vaults are all further away. Obviously, we spent a year working on this project, and I feel that third-party review might be a little bit of overkill. Obviously, it's the board's decision. But I would hope to request a conditional approval on a, obviously, Warren Article, which you guys all confuse me on quite a bit, so... And providing the other information you were hoping for, the signage documentation.
Yep.
And whatever changes, I know we have a couple, we have to sit down with Jason from the sewer department, we're going to remove one manhole per his request. So I would like to ask for a conditional approval on meeting the town's requirements and your requests, if possible.
So the conditions are, does...
Conditions are the signage. Approved sign.
Did we get a staff recommendation? I don't seem to have that in front of me.
Yeah, it's on the backside of...
Backside of...
It starts on page... Yes, it starts in the, in the packet. It starts on the backside of the letter from Stuart Hanna. There might be some extra copies up there, too.
Oh, the backside of the letter?
Oh, in the packet only, not the ones up here perhaps, but it should be... And if we're out of copies, I can always get some more here.
So the conditions to consider, this, prior to the start of development, to execute a development agreement with the town and provide funds and ask Row to allow for construction inspection by the town's engineer, which are we going to need to do that? Well, we will do the town's inspections. Correct? So that's a condition. Does everyone...
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Did you get that, Joseph? You wrote it out, so you get it.
Yep.
Prior to the start of development, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District approval shall be obtained for the proposed connections to the public sewer system. Make the corresponding revisions to the utility plan as outlined by Plymouth Village Water and Sewer.
Yep.
Driveway permit approval should be obtained from New Hampshire DOT. Wetlands permit approval should be obtained from New Hampshire DES. And any other necessary permitting shall be obtained by the applicant prior to initiating development.
Yep.
Any proposed signage for the site shall comply with the section four oh eight of the zoning ordinance, which we've gone over.
Yep.
And if any use proposed for either building would require a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment, confirms the uses proposed with the applicant. The applicant shall obtain any necessary special exception approvals prior to beginning construction. If any changes, here's your question. If any changes to the zoning ordinance are approved at the 2025 town meeting, which would require a special exception for a proposed use, the applicant shall obtain any necessary special exceptions prior to beginning construction. In either case, the applicant should be aware that the provisions of RSA 676:12 may apply to certain uses.
Can I just make a reminder before we move on to a motion?
Yep.
Findings of fact.
Yep, okay, yes. Let's see, and as in all cases where there is a substantial amount of disturbed area, the board should consider whether requiring a site reclamation bond will be appropriate. Factors to consider when making this determination are proximity of disturbance to abutting properties, potential impact on abutting properties if the site were left unstable, density of surrounding development, environmental factors, et cetera. In this case, the board should consider what would be the likely impact on the surrounding area if the development were to go unfinished and the site left unstabilized. There is likely to be a significant hazard to pedestrians or abutting properties due to the distance between the site and any surrounding development, and the unlikely nature of pedestrian use of Yeton Road, though the disturbed area would be in close proximity to Millbrook. So how does anyone feel about that?
That last one, I mean, Mr. Hess, do you feel that, you are Mr. Hess, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, sorry, just wanted to make sure I got your name right. Do you feel that if the project were to go unfinished, that there would be any negative impact on the environment, especially because it's so close to Millbrook?
I don't think so, just because I'm sure as all of us who've grown up around here, we've seen that was a dump site for a long time, and a lot of field just got dumped and never went anywhere. So I think we'd be in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're not really in... I don't think it's a huge concern because of the pedestrians and abutting properties are sort of pushed back and far away.
Yeah, yeah. It's really an island.
So we don't feel that that should be a condition?
I don't feel strongly, no.
I don't feel strongly about that. Is there a reclamation?
Mike?
Anything else?
Okay.
But the...
I would just say, that makes sense to me. I agree. Although the fact that things have happened there previously doesn't mean it can like happen again, like in terms of like dumping things there previously doesn't mean it should continue.
My decision is not based on his comment, but...
So I will clarify that, but in general, yes, I agree, we don't need that.
Okay.
But the first five.
On that comment, is there any risk that excavation there is going to reveal contaminated soil?
We dug test pits, it's all just filled.
Good question.
You retract the previous statement. Do you have any questions regarding what we've been talking about with the 2025 zoning amendment?
I do understand that if it changes, we will have to go to zoning to get a special exception because it's already been... We just don't know exactly the full order. I haven't read that all yet.
So they are posted on the town's website. I'm sure Joseph can send them to you. Pretty much in a nutshell, commercial uses in the ag zone, the uses you're proposing used to be, or currently are, permitted uses, but it has been proposed by citizens in the town that they now become a special exception going forward.
And, you know, so obviously, the conditional approval, if we have to go to zoning, we will obviously go to zoning.
That's all it is.
Great.
So if that's that, let's do findings of fact.
All right.
Favorite.
Tally-ho.
Findings backed, the applicant has stated they would agree to the conditions that we've asked for? Is that a finding of fact? Okay. It's not a finding of fact.
The applicant meets all dimensional requirements? And setbacks?
Yep.
The application fits within our current uses, although that might change, and we've had a conversation about that. The applicant has provided stormwater drainage, lighting, and other necessities of our site plan review regulations?
Including parking spaces.
And parking. And/or zoning, yeah.
Yep.
They have provided for appropriate snow placement? Okay, that's five.
Can I make a motion that we approve the application with the conditions already stated?
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve application with conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
And I'm recusing because I wasn't here for the beginning.
Abstain, okay. So it has been approved. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have a copy of the agenda, like a physical copy? I have it on my computer, but I don't want to flip back and forth.
And can I seat him as chair now?
You don't have to, you can keep going if you like. You've done a good job.
It's more the agenda, right?
Yeah, the agenda. Actually, any...
Yes.
We have not.
We've not done that one yet. That's...
Oh, that's three likes, okay. And I want to make sure I have copies of everything. Well, actually, not everything, just the big ones. I mean, the plans, eh?
Just the big ones. I know what you mean.
I'm still switching gears here, all right.
So, John, we voted to put, well, before you got here, we voted to put Colby Lenantine at the back. But he's here, so whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Well, I think if we put him to the back, we might as well leave him to the back.
All right. Good evening.
So I'm seating John as the chair.
Thank you, Sue.
And just so that you know, we addressed the letter that came from... Okay, we addressed that, and the comments are in the minutes, and Joseph is going to see that he gets that information.
Yeah, because me and Joseph had talked before, and I said it was okay if he, like, spoke for my thoughts. Did you speak for my thoughts? On the letter?
So we shared...
Pretty much just went over what recusing is all about, and yeah.
Got it.
There's a, there's a article in the packet.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right.
Can you pass that down to me?
So... My notes here. Okay, so up next, we have an application for a boundary line adjustment at ninety-eight and one-twelve Texas Hill Road. To read from the copy here, a boundary line adjustment application to relocate the common boundary line between parcels two twenty-one oh six eight and two twenty-one oh seven oh owned by Jacqueline Downing Trust of nineteen ninety-nine and located at ninety-eight and one-twelve Texas Hill Road. And so same procedure basically for a boundary line adjustment in terms of acceptance and then approval or what have you. And as a reminder, before we go any further, so we have two separate applications here, one for bounding line adjustment, one for conditional use permit, and we'll be considering each of them separately. So we don't really want to talk about the conditional use permit materially yet, really just the boundary line adjustment. With that, if the applicant would like to speak to the application?
Good evening.
How's it going?
Good.
Ted?
Good night, you.
Great. Hi. My name is Ben Downing. I live at Five Downing Drive. I'm here tonight with two applications. Obviously, we're doing the boundary line adjustment first. Both applications are associated with a duplex development project that I'm planning on Texas Hill Road on these two lots. The project includes the construction of four individual duplex units on two separate but adjoining lots. The lots are about a half-mile up Texas Hill Road from the Fox Park Pond Langdon-Thurlo Street intersection, so on the, kind of the town side, Plymouth side of Texas Hill. The purpose of the duplex is to lease them out to young professional couples and families, and the location is in a nice rural setting, but also allows easy access to local businesses, local amenities, and I-93. So each lot will house two duplex units, and they will be serviced by a single driveway per lot, so one driveway per lot, two units per lot. Due to existing site conditions, namely wetlands and some of the grades that we've encountered on-site and some rock, there is little flexibility with the proposed location of curb cuts. And as the boundary line exists, both curb cuts would be on lot number sixty-eight, which is an uphill, the left-hand lot, if you're looking at the site plan here in front of me. Obviously, that's not permissible for the zoning ordinance or the conditional use permit application. So in order to comply, we're proposing to adjust the boundary line so that we basically get one driveway per lot, and everybody's happy.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions about the boundary line adjustment? I think it seems pretty straightforward in many ways. All right, no?
Make a motion to accept the application?
Yeah.
Second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, so all in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so we are accepted as complete, and then any further discussion about the application before we turn it to public hearing? All right. So it is currently seven nineteen, and I will open a public hearing. Are there any comments related to the boundary line adjustment on this property? Again, not the residential development at this point? Okay. With that, it is still seven nineteen, and I will close the public hearing. Anything else from the board? Any questions or concerns? Findings of fact? If you look at the the staff report, the staff member over here was very generous to give us a list of findings of fact, which all looked like they'd check out to me. Comments and recommendations?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because the boundary line adjustment increases the size of the lots.
Do we need to state them?
You should probably state it.
Okay, so finding of fact, the proposed boundary line adjustment would increase the size of parcel two-two-one dash zero-seven-zero by point seven acres and decrease the size of parcel two-two-one dash zero-six-eight by the same amount.
Both proposed lots would meet the minimum lot size requirements and road frontage requirements of the single-family residential zoning district.
Both lots are currently vacant.
Anyone want to, do you want to take another one?
Water and sewer service is currently not available to either lot.
Our leak water and sewer service is currently not available to either lot, the nearest public water and sewer is located at the intersection of Texas Hill Road and Langdon Street.
And the applicant requested a number of waivers from certain requirements of the subdivision regulations. If applicable, the board granted these waivers in accordance with subdivision regulation section 8, per n, d, per n.
So I have a question. This is in the Ag Zone, correct?
Single-family.
It's at the very edge of single-family, I believe. That's correct.
I also thought it was Ag Zone, but no, it's single-family, yeah. It's the very beginning of Texas Hill Road.
It's like, like the next parcel up, I believe, is Ag.
Oh.
Close, it's really close.
Okay, so I'm thinking from the other end.
Mm-hmm.
And, we're looking at it from Fox Park.
Correct.
It was just logged last week.
What's that?
It was just logged. If you drop it, they'll see it clearly.
I guess I haven't been by there in a while, very much so.
Very quickly, yeah.
It's just, that definitely catches your eye.
Old picture.
Yeah, that's true.
What waivers are requested? Oh, they're down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't get that far.
Thank you, Joseph, for the findings of fact.
Yes, thank you.
And they have a further explanation at the end of their application document.
And the conditions to consider that are in this staff report are basically the standard record of the Mylar for recording and the
Yeah. Final plan.
Fees, I go along with that, recording fees, so it's usually not even really considered a condition so much as a part of the process.
Yeah.
Well, anybody want to?
I move to accept this, okay.
Not accept, but?
Help me out here.
Approve.
Approve, thank you. I move to
Go ahead, finish.
Okay. I move to approve this application of site, of boundary line adjustment.
And I'll second it with the conditions listed for?
Which is basically a standard.
The Mylar.
Standard conditions.
Yeah. Which is thus that we need to record a Mylar and provide recording fees. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the application is approved, thank you very much. And I suppose you're not going to go too far yet?
Nope.
Because you've got another one?
I won't run off on you.
Right on its back. All right. So, up next, for the same applicant, we have a conditional use permit for the same two lots. A conditional use permit application to permit the development of two, two-family dwellings and associate improvements on each parcel 228-068 and 221-070 owned by Jacqueline Downing Trust of 1999 and located at 98 and 112 Texas Hill Road. So, I will say right, right now, we don't do a whole lot of conditional use permits on this board, and this one is related to a fairly recent zoning amendment from the last couple of years to allow residential co-location. And, so in addition to following the same process of accepting and then approving or not, unless the case may be, we also have in our packet somewhere, well, we have some waiver requests, I thought it was boundary line adjustment.
That's the boundary line, yeah.
Yeah. Where is it? So, 401.1B. I'll just read through this quickly, as much as I can. The planning board may grant a conditional use permit for the placement of more than one, single-family or two-family dwelling on a lot, provided that, one, for the proposed number of dwelling units, the lot meets the minimum lot area requirements under section 304, area dimensions. Two, interior setbacks, access and circulation between buildings shall meet life safety minimums as determined by the Plymouth Fire Department, and we do have a note in our packet from the fire department about that. There shall, a positive one. There shall be a landscape buffer along the full length of any lot line abutting an existing single-family dwelling and internal landscaping providing for orderly separation between dwellings and one or more landscaped walkways providing connectivity within the site. The applicant provides for adequate water supply and for sewage disposal service in compliance with RSA 485 and so forth. There shall be not more than one curb cut from the street unless for life safety minimums by the Plymouth Fire Department, and we talked about curb cuts and boundary line adjustments already. There shall be sufficient off-street parking on the lot for each dwelling unit to comply with minimum parking requirements. Proposed co-location of single-family and two-family dwellings is not an open space residential development under Article 5. So that's what we have to look at as a board for a conditional use permit. Would you like to say anything about your proposal? I know you've talked to us before as a conceptual, but would you like to present a full material at this point?
Yeah, this is my first time on the planning board for this project, aside from the boundary line. So, I gave a fair introduction, and the other one, does that suffice? But, I guess if you want a little bit more information, again, four units, two pieces of property, two units per piece. The units are duplexes, they're about 2,300 square feet apiece, two-bedroom, one-bath. Planning to put a full basement under there for, for use, tenant use. I know I've moved a couple times in my, my life, and you never know how much crap you have until you go to, go to move it somewhere. So I'm hoping to alleviate that issue for, for my tenants. Aside from that, it's, it's relatively straightforward and as, kind of as shown, I will say, across the street is the house that I grew up in and the house that my family still lives in. It's 5 Downing Drive and it's directly across from these two parcels here. So, not only are, you know, am I going to be an owner of, of these duplexes, we're also neighbors, so it's in my best interest to, to create and build good quality units and rent them out to good quality people, and to maintain them as such. And I also plan to live in one of these things after I build them, so I'll, I'll be on-site for at least the short term, next few years and, you know, be able to get a handle on maintaining everything and get a good feel for what it's like to be a landlord. It'll be my first experience. So. Yeah, aside from that, I'm, I'm happy to go through and address each of the requirements, if that's helpful for you folks. I understand this is a new conditional use permit.
Yeah, I was thinking some of the things about walkways and landscaping and such would be helpful to
Sure. Would you like me to start on number one and just go through and just do them quick? So, lot meets area requirements, in short, yes, this is in the staff review, but we need 1.52 acres to do what we need to, and we have 2.51 and 2.71 respectively. Again, I, I kind of underdeveloped the property, if you will. I don't want to pack a bunch of, you know, as many houses as I can into the place, again, maintain the, the quality of the neighborhood. Number two, setbacks, access and circulation to meet life safety requirements per the Plymouth Fire Department. I sat down with our new fire chief last month and we went over everything, he has no issues with our layout or our project in general.
And we have a memo to that effect.
Yes, we have a memo to that effect. He did have two recommendation requirements that were in there, hammerheads, he wanted those at the end of the driveway so he could turn his apparatus around, and he wanted the driveways to be 20 feet wide. Both of those are reflected in this site plan here, so we should be all good to go there. Number three is the landscape buffer at lot lines, internal landscaping and walkways for connectivity. Yes, as you mentioned, the lot has already been logged, we do, I, I know it, it looks different, it looks different to me, too. I'm used to pulling out of the driveway and not seeing some open space there. But we were able to leave a good buffer of trees along all the buttering property lines, which is nice. And, unfortunately, we had to take out some more trees than I would have preferred in the wetland, but we had a lot of hemlock and pine, and those are really susceptible to wind, so it's either take them out now or have them blow over onto my new, my new duplex buildings or pay, you know, an insane amount of money to have them pulled. So, that's, that's kind of how we arrived there. The most recent, recent iteration of this site plan does include landscaped areas, we've got some lawns marked out, some bushes, planting, stuff like that. Again, it's in my best interest to maintain and, and build a good quality area. I'm not gonna leave it unlandscaped, it's not going to be a sandy pit when I'm done, so, that's the plan there. And there are walkways shown from the driveway area up to the entrance to the units and parking spaces and stuff like that.
And I should say, we, before going too much further, we should consider whether this is complete. Which I imagine it probably is.
Yes.
If anybody wants to.
Make a motion, oh.
Go ahead.
I don't, who started?
I think Sue did.
Make a motion to accept the application as complete?
I second.
Any discussion? Any all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right. So it's, that's complete. And I should also just say, as a background to everyone out there or on this board even, we don't normally see residential developments in the, on the planning board unless they're OSRD or they're multifamily, but because this is a multiple, it's a residential co-location on a single lot, this is why we have the conditional use permit and we're looking at it even at the planning board level?
I like this conditional use permit.
Yeah.
I was very excited when we did this.
Yeah.
Because it allows for more housing opportunities without overdevelopment.
It's, it's interesting, a little bit backstory, like, I think when we passed this, we recommended at the board level and then the town passed it. I'm not sure there was much assumption that it would be used all that quickly. And it's actually gotten quite a lot of interest, which is interesting.
Just out of curiosity, am I the first applicant to go through? Oh, great.
Not through yet.
Fantastic. Well, right, right, right.
To apply.
Knocking on wood here.
Should be same, the same as the conceptual we had for multiple dwellings on one lot, correct?
Yes. Even the one at the other part of town, yes. But that hasn't been an application yet.
Just the conception.
All right. Anything from the board before we open a public hearing?
Do you have your septic approval?
I do not have septic approval and I don't have wetland crossing approval, both of which I would need, and I was hoping to get conditional approval and have those be a part of it, as well as driveway permits and building permits.
Okay.
A condition with all the standard permitting.
Yeah. Before I do finish, too, I saw a note in the staff review about, excuse me, about third-party engineer review. I, I'd just like to note that this is a fairly small residential development, and it's not even subject to site plan review, and I'd just like to request that that third-party engineer review not be required. You know, trying to keep costs down, and ideally I can keep costs down and pass those savings on to, on to tenants in, in terms of low rent, and a third-party review would increase my timeline and, and increase my costs. And again, given the size, I, I really don't know that it's necessary, but that's obviously up to, up to you folks to decide.
I mean, and it's just one, like, kind of thing that's worth considering, which you probably have already. By putting, by doing commercial, uh, commercial, residential co-location, it, future resale, we'll have to kind of a, address that, and it might not be what everybody's looking for, but it certainly could meet a niche, and it's like, as long as you know that going in, that, you know, certain things look differently in a resale environment for co-located residential. But, it seems like an interesting, great project, otherwise, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a couple of just questions.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
These are not necessarily hugely impactful questions, but questions that we're just, I'm curious about.
Yeah, have at it.
Since the buildings will be located so close to a wetland, are there plans of how you're going to mitigate basement wetness in terms of perimeter drains or sump pumps or anything like that? It's a big concern of mine personally, so.
It is, believe me, a concern of mine as well. We haven't had the most apt weather to do test pits since we've, since we've had the logging done, so I don't know the extent of that, but I would have to imagine that some sort of sump pump would be, obviously foundation waterproofing and all that sort of fun stuff. But a, a sump pump is probably going to be required in the basements, unfortunately.
Okay. Would a perimeter drain?
Uh, perimeter drain would help, but
But still, we would think you'd need some.
Yeah, if the hydrostatic pressure push, it, it comes up too much, it'll just go right through the, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Any, anything else? So, it is currently 7:36 and I will open a public hearing. If anybody has any comments or questions about this application, please come up and voice them.
My name is Jeff Downing. I own, my wife and I own 5 Downing Drive, which is a seven-acre parcel, and we own 6 Downing Drive, which is five acres with a single duplex. The duplex has been on there for 30 years. I am a Plymouth native, and I've lived on Texas Hill since the late 80s. Full disclosure, Ben's my son. We acquired these parcels, we currently own these parcels, acquired them over the years as they came on the market with the idea that if our kids ever wanted to move back to the Plymouth area, that we could make some land available and give them a hand up like people gave us a hand up in this community when I was his age. What we found out was, when Ben all came back to work for my company out of UVM, he was in a, a similar duplex in Epsom with rents over $2,000 a month. And, as an employer in this area, I've been in the construction business and ran Coniston Construction for 33 years. We've gone through the COVID, we've gone through the supply chain issues, and now we're dealing with labor, which is trying to get skilled people back into this community, the greater New Hampshire community, and there is frankly no housing available. And, I hear the federal government talk about it, and I hear the state government talk about it, but so far, nobody's come through with any money. So, you know, everybody wants these developments, nobody wants them in their backyard and nobody wants to pay for them. This is going in my front yard, and, you know, I'm planning to stay there, and I got faith that we're gonna, Ben's gonna do this right. And, the town has been very cooperative with this whole deal, from the town manager to the planner to the fire chief to the road agent, the ZBA, and getting through the hurdles, and I think this will be a great thing, not only for my son, but for the younger people who want to come back to New Hampshire and work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say that I appreciate the application, it is very well done, it's complete, we don't have a lot of questions because it's well done, so I appreciate that and thank you.
And I also appreciate seeing more housing coming to Plymouth.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I know we can't always dictate the form, but our zoning can help dictate the form of housing, and when we added that zoning a couple of years back, this is exactly
Here it is.
This is exactly what I saw, is not a high, high density of units, but something like this, I'm really pleased to see this. Look forward to the development.
It's our work paying off.
Eight units at a time.
You know?
That's all, hey? Every little bit.
Often how you do it, right?
I think it's great.
All right.
So you're gonna close the hearing? Anybody else?
Oh, yeah. Anyone else? Is Zoom empty?
Uh, we do have one person on Zoom, but nobody's raised their hand or unmuted.
Oh, I see, I see an answer. They're just answering my question.
Yes.
All right, so it is 7:40 and I will close the public hearing. So is there any further discussion from the board? I'm just kind of looking through our application and our notes. So we know about permitting already and we've had a discussion about that and what's necessary, oh, there you are. And
It's like they already met with the ZBA.
They got that.
Yep.
And
They have the blessing of the fire department?
Yep.
With the noted
Okay.
Changes. Plymouth Village Water and Sewer is not involved.
All right. All right. Well, do you want to do some findings of fact? I think, well, we just kind of made some informally.
They have their notice of decision from the zoning board.
Yep.
They've agreed to get all necessary permitting, as will be a condition anyway of approval, presumably?
Yep, all criteria has been met per zoning ordinance, section 401.1.
Anything else?
The applicant, the applicant has put together the hammerheads for the driveways, as the fire department requested.
All right, I think that's pretty good.
Yeah.
So, we have a list of suggested conditions to consider here, including some of the things we were just talking about, like the permitting of the driveways and wetlands, probably in here, yeah, wetlands, wetland, so DES and.
Septic.
Septic, and, yeah. And there should be one for the boundary line adjustment being finalized. And, so it's been approved, it does have to do the mile hour in the piece. Last one there, prior to development, the applicant should obtain a building permit, because this is not yet a building permit.
And I don't think we need to have the engineers view a third-party review.
Okay.
Does anyone make, want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the application, and with all accompanying sewer, septic approvals from the state.
Driveway.
Driveway permits, that we approve it.
I second that.
It's all Sue, Sue seconds it.
And, and the condition that they also finalize the boundary line adjustment.
Yes.
So we have a condition, a motion and a second for conditional approval, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that was everyone. So, you are approved. Wonderful, thank you. I look forward to seeing some new housing.
Me too, thank you.
Best of luck.
Good luck, Ben. Thank you, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So now we've got, we've got one more before them.
One more before the, back to the beginning again. Okay, so, up next, we have a boundary line adjustment for Nine Valley View Lane and 4081 Main Street. This is a boundary line adjustment application to relocate the common boundary line between parcels 209060 and 209056, owned by Steven and Patricia Temporino and John and Kerry Glidden, and located at Nine Valley View Lane and 481 Main Street. The applicants or their representatives like to say anything about the nature of this boundary line adjustment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mario Focoretto, Brown Engineering, and tonight, representing the Pellegrinos, Temporino, sorry. This is a pretty simple lot-line adjustment. Brown Engineering was contracted to survey in conjunction with French Land Services, the Temporino property, and in do, in doing so, we found that the well was located on the Abutter's property. We brought that to, to the attention of the owner, they had reached out to their Abutter, and they made an agreement to shift the boundary line to keep the well on the intended property. The lot-line adjustment will not affect the conformity of the lots, either lots, frontages don't change, we don't, no encroachments are created, and the lot sizes still meet.
Okay. So you're just, you're trying to solve a problem that you discovered, and the scheme is pretty straightforward in many ways, and when you say no encroachments, that includes into the setbacks, I imagine.
Exactly.
Any comments or questions from the board before we consider acceptance?
I'll make a motion that we accept the application.
Second?
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, okay. So the application is accepted as complete, now, any further questions before we open a public hearing?
Can't say no.
We have a lot of stuff on the plate tonight, but so far it's pretty straightforward, which is nice. So, it is 7:47, and I will open a public hearing on this boundary line adjustment. If anybody would like to speak to this application, or ask questions, please do so. Okay.
Trish Temporino.
Yep.
Thank you for taking the time tonight to hear this. It was a bit of a shock to us to find out that our well wasn't on our property. We bought the house in 1988, and we were very young, and we didn't realize that it wasn't on the property, so I appreciate your, your time tonight to hear this.
Thank you. All right, with that, it is 7:48, and I will close the public hearing. And, any questions before we move on, or comments before we move on to findings of fact? Joseph was very generous again, and outlined some helpful comments.
Doesn't change the road frontage.
The proposed boundary line adjustment would not change the road frontage. That's what you meant to say, Sue, right?
That's what I did.
I'll read the next one. Both proposed lots would meet the minimum lot size requirements of the Highway Commercial Zoning District, neither lots would become non-conforming.
Both lots are currently developed with an existing single-family dwelling.
The boundary line adjustment will remedy the servicing the well. Cures that issue.
I, and I, I will point out that we do have a, which we did not consider before completeness, which I think is fine, that the, there are a series of waivers, which I think are fully reasonable within the current application, which is why I didn't even look for them, because, but yes.
We've done them before and it's, it's fine.
Technically, they probably should have been looked at before completeness, but yeah. All right.
Is that good for finding a fact, or do we need any more?
I think we're good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this application. Any further, we had that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was everyone, right, yep. All right, so, we are approved, let's make sure that you provide a mile hour to record and the recording fees, and then you'll be all set to go. I'm glad you could resolve this.
Yeah.
Me too, thank you, and I do want to mention that Mr. Perez has been very helpful for us to navigate the process. If you need to go, come here, so we just wanted to.
Glad to hear, he's, he's just very helpful.
Thank you.
We know we're very lucky with Joseph.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now, now we, are you making a lot of motions this evening? Sue? Are you making a lot of motions this evening?
Well, we can move on, we can keep going.
All right, so I'm gonna press like the rewind in my packet, packet here, I think we're going back to Three Lakes, and let me just officially introduce this. So, we have a site plan review application from Three Lakes Properties, Hamilton Way. This is a review of a site plan review application from Three Lakes Properties LLC for possible acceptance and public hearing. The application is to establish and expand a retail landscape material sales and retail greenhouse space on parcels 21301, 2001, 002, 003, and 004, located on both sides of Hamilton Way, and as a reminder, this is an application we've seen previously, and we noted that some pieces that, including stormwater, that we wanted to have more information about before accepting, and so we're here to have another look and see where we are. And so, depending on how things go, we can accept that's complete, and then we can talk about public hearing and approval, conditional approval and so forth, as per standard procedure. Hello?
Good evening, Mario Focoretto, Brown Engineering, representing Colby Lenantine and Three Lakes Landscaping. I think I got the names right that time. As you said, this project has been, this application has been in front of the board in the past, this is the first time that we are involved with this application process, so we're gonna try to pick up where, where you and Colby had left off. We saw the staff memo, and we went through it and tried to address any of the comments or concerns that the planner had. We've completed and submitted a stormwater report, and we've added a bunch of information to the site plan.
Okay, thank you. So, looking over this, do we have any questions or comments before we move forward? Thank you for providing this extra information, appreciate it. I, I was looking through everything, and this kind of backtracking in my own mind, in some of the original materials we saw earlier, I was concerned about elevations and such, but I realized some of that was in the original packet that we got, in terms of a proposed elevation, kind of a standardized one, not a specific one, but of what the, like, greenhouse could look like, for example, most likely. And we've got the stormwater report, and, so I, Joseph, can you clarify, so I think what we were sent was a couple of pages, right? And was it, was it just a summary of this then?
So the first, so what, what was scanned in, due to the size constraint, did not include basically all of the background information, but included all of the narrative and existing and proposed conditions as described, so it basically included the outputs, but it didn't include the background data from the HydroCAD model, just due to the size of the file, but that is the full report there, which has that, that backup.
I can pass this around if anyone wants. I mean, I, I looked at it originally, and I initially, and I said, it seems a little bit light, and like, missing some of that kind of further, like, detailed analysis, and I guess. Now, now we, I know why. So it's good to know that. So I think we can still decide, you know, for a development of this size, whether or not we might want to have outside review in addition to this, but it's, this is certainly a great place to be right now, to actually have this information, and can you speak to the, looking through this, and some of this is already developed, and I think some of this is proposed in terms of the issue I'm looking at, which is setbacks and encroachment into the setbacks?
Sure, well, let's start with the disturbance. This subdivision was approved in 2009, built in 2010, and going through some historical, historical photos, you'll see that this land has been, been worked ever since, there's always been some kind of action on it. It appeared that once, once they built the roadway, Hamilton Way, they then got each lot pad ready, which essentially leveled it out, ready for sale, for someone to come in and put a building there. Colby got this property, or purchased the property in 2019, he started up front, which is the existing building, ten Hamilton Way, he's been in front of the board 2019, 21, to expand. He has merged these parcels. Essentially, the prop, the subdivision started as five parcels, Colby is now the owner of all of them, he has merged from five, he's merged two of them, four of them, into two, making three parcels now. Previous, again, previously permitted activity here, and what we're here for is just, I guess, a change of use and to continue what he's doing now in, geez. Excuse me, I'm sorry, it's been a long night, continue his work in the southern portion of the plot, I'll go through that here. Jesus.
Oh, no.
Rugged in here. Thank you. Okay, so what we're, what he's proposing is a greenhouse, a woodshed, and to relocate a covered salt storage. There, there are some encroachments to the front setback, and I agree with the planner's remark that that would require a variance with the ZBA, which may be sought. There's two things to keep in mind when we show these variances, one is the applicant owns the entire T of the road, all the way around, it is completely his maintenance responsibility, it is not used to access any other parcel, there is a right-of-way that does continue to access a undeveloped parcel, which I believe Colby has reached out to possibly also purchase and then would eliminate that private way.
I mean, if I, if I may, I mean, one of the concerns on the planning board side is that it may change hands at some point, in which case these might become issues, if it does change hands.
Part of that, again, so what we're talking about here is a private way, and there's easement shown on the plan, which, debatably, if they should be shown at all, you cannot give an easement to oneself, by definition, with that being said, we're still left, we've left them on there. The, there is a, an encroachment with the purg, proposed pergola, these aren't permanent structures, they're shown, they can be picked up and moved, and again, this, this road is access to his property alone, and it's, and it's his responsibility to maintain it.
Can you, can you tell me anything about the drainage easement?
Sure, I believe that drainage easement was created when Hamilton Road was approved. There is a small wetland shown on the southern end or the very end of that Hamilton Road. That wetland is a man-made wetland, it's actually a propos, well, it was a, an approved retention pond. Hamilton Road bisects the, the gradient, which collects all of the runoff that would go towards Mill Brook, it intercepts that, it runs it along Hamilton Way through culverts and swales, and it outfalls into that, that wetland area where the proposed, or the, its existing retention pond, man-made retention pond. And it outfalls into that wetland area where the proposed, or the, its existing retention pond, man-made retention pond. This has been taken a step further and is modeled in our hydraulic analysis, and there is a retention pond beyond that. So the outfall from what is now the wetlands, we'll just refer to that as the wetlands now, man-made wetlands, is a culvert, and it used to outfall and just overland flow into the brook. Now there is a retention pond, more specifically, an infiltration basin, that captures the runoff or the outfall from that wetlands. The soils here are really good, atoms, sandy loam, so they got a really good perk qualities, percolation qualities. So a lot of what goes into that pond does not come out. And we've found that there isn't, in fact, there's a decrease in both volume and flow rates coming off the site with that pond in place.
So I guess, I'm curious, like looking at the woodshed, why that wasn't designed to be just like, probably just a few feet away or differently shaped, that it wouldn't be encroaching into that easement? I mean, it's an encroachment to an easement, and it might not be practically a very important one, but it seems like if it was just slightly differently shaped or moved somewhere very slightly, it would just be a non-issue at that point.
Sure. We'd be happy to shift that out of that.
I guess that's the sort of thing I'm looking at, like some of these things seem that they could just be shifted a little bit and then like be a non-issue.
Do you feel the same about the pergola?
I don't know. So the pergola is a non-permanent structure?
Yeah, and neither is the woodshed. The woodshed is a freestanding structure. Do you want to talk about these?
I mean, all of it's portable. Two shipping containers were roof over there. It can all be moved off the property next day. The pergola, is that the pergola that's like the entrance to the greenhouse?
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't hit any setback issues that I'm aware of, so I'm not sure what the issue is with the pergola. That is why we merged the lots to begin with, and it is located with inside my design plan.
Just a front lot line to a back?
From lot, because it's, I thought it was.
Thirty feet off of the right-of-way?
I mean, it could be shifted one way or another a bit.
I mean,
the problem is the lots, I mean, it gets pigeonholed between that side coming down. So I just move it closer to the, you know, wetlands.
So practically, I get that. But I mean, you're asking us to accept the site plan here, which gets recorded, which has a whole bunch of.
You know, I'm not aware of that exact setback.
Okay.
That can be shifted if it need be three feet. I see it can't be much, but it's off.
I mean, it would be beneficial to accept the site plan without encroachments into the setbacks, especially if that's an easy thing to do. Probably be a lot easier than trying to get a variance, which would be a hard one for this reason to get, I would imagine.
I mean, the issue with those lots is that meeting the front setback and then the setback from the road. I mean, I might as well build off of the cliff and then try to build the rest. It just starts to get pigeonholed along.
I mean, I'm seeing some of what the changes would be, like the pergola moving ten feet maybe on that.
Some of it's just trying to line the site for the front of the building. The idea of the pergola is to draw people out to the greenhouse retail area. You hide it behind the bend, then your line of sight's on there.
So I get that. I do. And I also know that, in terms of this board, some of our site plan review regulations we could be a little bit flexible on, but when it comes to our zoning ordinance, we really can't. And this would require a variance, which is a pretty high bar for, like, just saying I'd like the sightline to be different.
I understand. I've already dealt with the variance before with the other building.
I remember that, yeah.
I'm not trying to build a massive building here, like, I'm just trying to add features to the property to make it a little more interesting and curvative. Create more retail space. I guess that wasn't something that came up in the last meeting, so it wasn't something that we addressed.
Okay.
So we apologize if that was overseen, in matter of moving it ten feet to be compliant and make everyone happy on this.
Okay.
Would the pergola be,
I mean, it's a permanent.
Would the set, like, would the pergola, I understand, we'll talk about the woodshed next, but would the pergola even fall within the setback, so it's such a non-permanent structure?
Insofar as it's, like, similar to, like, a shed could be like a non-permanent structure sometimes as well, and that should also be not inside the setback.
Sheds have walls, though. I don't know. Pergolas are just, they're like a wide open.
It's like four posts and some rafters. You wrap some vines around it, call it good.
For some context on this property, the 10 Hamilton Way main sales building did have to get a special exception to have a pergola encroach into the setback on that property. So in this development in the past, pergolas have been required to get a special exception to encroach as an accessory structure.
Okay, so not an actual variance, a special exception?
There's two things in, two things at play here. There's a parking setback, which is a variance, and an accessory structure within a setback, which is a special exception.
Okay.
So I would say that if historically the pergola proved to be an accessory structure, that at maximum would also what the woodshed would be proposed to be, which looks like the woodshed is.
The woodshed's movable.
Two feet if that.
So I would say, you know, if the pergola being there for sightlines is important to the design of the site, and you want to try to get a special exception for that, which is a lower bar than a variance, we could make that a condition, potentially, that, you know, you try to get a special exception for that, and if you don't, then you move it on the site plan and in practice. So that could be a potential condition, if you want to go through that with the ZBA.
The proposed material storage bays, can you just move those a little bit? Before you get them in?
They've been there since 2019.
Oh, it says proposed, Colby. Work with me here.
There are old ones, there are old ones, and there are new proposed ones. Were the, were the storage bins approved on the original site plan? Yeah, those, the back ones, the southern ones are new ones, the northern ones are already established. I'm asking, are the established ones, were they on the originally approved?
Yes.
Is that the original site plan?
Yeah, this is 2019. We got this from the planner when we were doing a little research on the property. And there's a note here written, "September 2019, approved. Salt storage must be covered. Need master sign plan." Showing them, showing the storage right where they are.
Does it show the setback?
It does not show the setback.
So that's important. That's important.
So they were built as they are indicated precisely on the plan?
Yes. And I, I can, you know, I wasn't at that meeting, but when I first looked at this and I looked at the staff report, it called it an accessory structure. In fact, they're more of a retaining wall than they are anything else. There is a grade differential between the front and the back. Is he utilizing that retaining wall as, on the front side of it, on his side? Yes, but I don't know that it meets accessory structure.
And whatever we call it, and I know it does matter, we are storing retail materials within the setback. And if we, potentially, I mean, I'm kind of curious about that, but like, all you say is correct. Already approved that, then that might be what it is.
But it doesn't seem like we should approve additional storage.
No, that's a separate issue, yeah.
And those are the ones that I'm referring to, the ones that it says proposed, the backside.
Yeah, and what would, what reason would the board give for not along that?
Encroaches on the easement.
And I will say that the.
Setback.
Setback, excuse me.
What is encroaching?
So I would say that, you're correct that the 2019 plan does show bins, but it does not show a setback line drawn in, which your plan today does. So I don't, it's hard to say whether the board knew when it was approving in 2019 that there was, those bins would be within the setback. It's impossible to say without that drawn on the plan.
And presum, assuming they were built as indicated on the plan, that's kind of a done deal at this point, assuming that's true. For new ones, Joseph, perhaps you can clarify this. The idea of storing retail sales material within the setback seems like it would not be what the setback is for.
Yes, we've got two pieces. There's outdoor sales of material, and then you have, what I understand, are three-sided concrete block structures with some kind of concrete or asphalt paved slab underneath them, which I would believe, based on a quick read of the definition of an accessory structure, probably meets that definition, which accessory structures are subject to setbacks like any other structures. I mean, if the board wants to view that differently, but I think it's, you know, these are not just piles of stuff. They are three-sided concrete block walls, if I'm not mistaken, right, and they're on a slab. I mean, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, it's a retaining wall.
So they are on a slab specifically? There's poured concrete?
Well, it's built like a retaining wall, so there's, I don't know that it's on a, it's concrete blocks over gravel, compacted gravel. It's a retaining wall.
It's a retaining wall meant to enclose on three sides retail products.
So if I put a wall on the back?
Before we get too far, can I actually just step us back for a second? I do want to return to this conversation and not forget it. Do we feel comfortable accepting this as complete?
Oh, that's.
I make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have one small question about this retention pond on the southern side. There's a pipe going, drawn going between the existing retention pond and the new retention pond, and then there's a second pipe. I'm just a little confused about what's going on with that second pipe. It's a little vague. Yeah.
Yeah. There is actually a swell, a natural swell. This is under the existing conditions, so I can't speak to how or when this was put in, but I did visit the site. On the existing conditions plan, you'll see the contour show there's a decent swell that leads into the property. And that pipe has been placed there to, I guess, convey that swell across.
So the swell is also flowing into that retention pond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's modeled that way on the hydraulic analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote? So we have a motion, a second, to accept as complete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? Okay, so we are complete. So I want to come back to that accessory structure slash retaining wall, as we're trying to kind of parse out here. So I'm looking in the zoning ordinance, accessory structure. Anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on the ground, which is subordinate to and detached from but located in the same lot as a principal structure, the use of which is customarily incidental and secondary to that of the principal structure. Accessory structure shall include, but not be limited to, pools and shed.
Which page is that, please?
That is page 10 of the, well, 14 of the entire document, numbered on the pages 10 of the zoning ordinance.
John?
Yes?
You're talking the retaining wall, the concrete structures?
Where the, with, the bays along the edge of the property there, yeah, where all the materials are stored, like the rocks and gravel and whatever else is there.
How are we interpreting a fixed?
A fixed? As in?
With a fixed location, so not the word a fixed, but with a fixed location on the ground.
What?
I mean, my gut tells me it's an accessory structure. However, I will defer to our professional staff here on this, too, which I know you've kind of leaned that direction already as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, obviously, these kinds of, you know, this is a, it is a zoning determination, and, you know, the material, they're labeled as material storage bays, not as a retaining wall or some type of topographical feature. They are called out in that way, and they're all, are called out as proposed concrete block walls. My understanding was that they were on some type of either concrete or hard-packed sort of permanent underpinning. But, you know, they, I have not walked the site to inspect them, but I think, you know, it seems like it, seems an awful lot like it meets that definition.
The lot's dirt, so they are not pinned together. They're just sitting there by gravity. I'll retain a grade change to maximize the real estate that I do have. I will say of anything that you guys are asking for, that'll probably be my biggest hardship for the project and where we currently are. I was here 2019. None of the prior questions came up about setbacks or anything like that. I have the current drawing with me right now that I brought in 2019 with the prior approval then. I mean, I don't really view them any more than a fence or a stone wall that would be built on a boundary line anyhow. I am not on the immediate, or on the immediate boundary line. There is space between me and that stone wall that's existing as my boundary line. It will create a lot of hardship for how material is delivered to my property. So by moving it even three feet, five feet, I'm not going to be able to bring a tractor trailer in to deliver mulch to my inner bins, because everything else will have to slide. I mean, you were talking about relaying out my entire yard. It becomes a very big challenge. Cost and operations, just flow of how to use the yard. And unfortunately, not like, these properties were really probably designed to put a 6,000 square foot building in the middle. That's obviously not my go at this property. I'm trying to use all usable space that is mostly all temporary structure or pallets or stone percent. I mean, I've been there since 2019, operational. I haven't had any complaints or issues from the flooding properties. So it doesn't appear to be a sore subject, being that I've been there now five years, six years. And I did have prior approval.
Only does that, does that apply when you're only talking about the new proposed ones? We're not talking about the existing structures that are in place?
And what, I'm sorry, what?
We're only talking about the proposed additional material storage bays? We're not talking about anything that's existing?
The bins in general.
I mean, if we've already accepted them, and even if we were wrong perhaps in accepting them, we did, and like, a done deal at this point. But you have new ones, which is what Zach is saying, and that's the ones we're concerned.
Those are the ones that I was asking about. If you could just move them when you, when you build it. It's not much, I mean.
And I'm looking at the scale of this. I think we have like several hundred feet there to move them like a little bit into the, out of the setback, doesn't seem like a huge.
It doesn't seem like it, but once again, it just extremely jams up the yard for flow of traffic. It's the narrowest point there. I'm assuming you guys have been to the property or have seen it. A ten wheeler, a tractor trailer truck, ten feet makes all the difference, whether someone's delivering material or not. You know, and those upper area is really where most of the containing comes. That's where the grade cut happens from the additional property, the flooding property, so.
So let's say this is an accessory structure, which we're still talking about, but let's just say for now it is. That would be a special exception then in the setback and not a variance. And what you're describing is a hardship in terms of doing your business. We still have to like, talk about retaining wall versus structure, but assuming it is a structure, if it really is that much of a hardship, it might be worth a special exception and seeking that out. How does the board feel about, I mean, I think of a retaining wall like as a landscaping feature, whereas I'm looking at this, and there are like walls put up to hold materials for sale, which seems more like an accessory structure. But I can defer to others.
So I remove the fingers between each bin, and now I just have concrete blocks on the back.
What's it retaining if it's just?
It's retaining the grave.
So they're submerged? So they're submerged?
The property behind me is four to six feet higher in elevation.
Okay.
So...
So it rolls onto my property, which also all the water from my property comes to my property.
I see.
Can I ask, Joseph? Let's just assume there were no walls there. And I, I truly don't know the answer to this question. Is it possible to have permanent or semi-permanent storage of retail materials within the setback?
So outdoor display area is typically not seen as a structure, but there is a specific section in the site plan regulations that deals with it. So it is seen as an issue that's within the board's purview to consider as a site plan review item. But it is typically, I mean, it, it could depend, but generally, I would say that is not seen as a structure on its own. But the board does have purview to look at locations of, of that type.
And I, I guess I'm wondering, because this seems different to me at least than like, a store might like, let's say they're selling chairs, like put some chairs out in the setback, which can be in 10 minutes removed and usually are each day. And this seems like something that's going to be there every day. And experience tells me it's going to be there every day, like permanently within that setback. And that's, that, that seems different to me.
Yeah.
And I'm just kind of looking for guidance. I mean, again, kind of my gut says like this is a violation of the setback. And I'm trying to figure out exactly how the, like, this is playing out. And if, if it makes sense and, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I get what you're saying about turnaround spaces and...
The proposed bins that are in place? Sorry. The, that construction was designed so that the fingers, actually they're not, they can be moved.
Mm-hmm.
So if it makes everyone, the idea of the fingers is so it off contamination between...
No, I get that, yeah.
If they go away, then all it is is now a retaining wall on the back.
Well, I mean, if you, if you...
They're not, they're portable, they're movable, they're, I mean, I can make them disappear if that is...
I don't think the fingers are a problem.
Well, I thought that's where it starts to break it into now...
Whether it's a wall or a structure? I see what you're saying.
A retaining wall, I build retaining walls all day long on boundary lines. And I'm not, I'm off of the boundary line, I mean...
Yeah, but I think you still have a secondary problem if you're storing retail material in the setback.
But I thought we just said that that was outside of that.
Joseph said it's outside of the special exception zoning consideration, but it still would be in site plan review consideration by this board. That was how I interpreted it, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So it is a, it is a criteria and I, I can find the section if you wanted the site plan regs, but it is...
If you could actually, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
So how far off are we?
Eyeballing it, it looks like six or seven feet.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah. And?
Which is the difference of moving the ten-wheeler in there to dump and fill the bins.
Oh. Colby?
Yes?
The rear wall, is that movable? If, if it had to, let's say you're done and, and you're, you sell it for someone else to use the property for something else?
The rear wall, I mean, the wall against my, the funding property?
What you're calling the retaining wall?
Yeah. That is 100% removable and can be moved.
So it's just gravity holding it down? It's not buried in the ground or anything?
Completely a portable structure, maybe. I hate to phrase it that way because the hardship it would cause to move it at this point and lay out of the yard is tremendous.
Well, the hardship to move it makes it feel semi-permanent.
I, excuse me, hinders the flow of traffic in there for delivering material. That's why it was chose to build and locate how it was.
I guess I'm...
But nothing is drilled and painted a place like other walls.
I guess I'm just a little puzzled, looking at this whole site plan, at the, like, encroachments into setbacks. And I know we talked about a few of the other ones already and I'm a little puzzled by that here.
Sure.
Thank you.
So worse, let's say, we... Let's say, John, we, he gets an approval with a condition that he gets a special exception for that wall.
Mm-hmm.
Is that where you're going, where you're thinking?
I know, that's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, I, I suspect nobody will have a huge problem with this. On the other hand, we have these rules for a reason. And, and even if we don't think they're as important here, once we start just kind of randomly making exceptions for it, that kind of undermines the, having the rules in the first place.
So the second option is if we just, do we have the ability to waive that five or six extra feet?
If we think it's within site plan review, then we have the ability to waive it. If we think it's an accessory structure, then it's in the zoning ordinance and we do not.
So the question is, is it a structure? Or is it part of his necessary, almost equipment to run his outdoor material?
No, the question is whether it's a retaining wall.
I think the, the board decided in 2019 that it was not a structure. That's my take.
I mean, it wasn't, I, I don't believe that was specified one way or the other in the minutes. They, the board approved the site plan clearly. It was not labeled on the site plan one way or the other. I, I don't think it's possible.
The board may not have known where the actual setback was.
It wasn't drawn in. I, I really couldn't, I couldn't say because it's not, it's not specified.
So, John, in the past, we've even called fences structures.
Fences are called out separately in the zoning ordinance and they are regulated by the zoning ordinance. And they had their whole, their whole special section and like whole chapter almost, I think, right?
So then how is this going to be called out? Is that related to more of a retaining wall? It's no different than an owl block or a techo block, segmental retaining wall? It's really more what it aligns with than a fence?
I mean, I think of a retaining wall as something that retains like landscaping. And I think of this as a series of walls that are holding in materials to sell, where it starts to become a bit more of a structure.
So if I remove the middle fingers, I only have the back wall, which is now a wall retaining grade, which is what a stone wall does, which you're allowed to do on...
And we're permanently storing, so what is, what is?
Permanent, because the material comes and goes every day. It's not the same amount.
I mean, I've been through there, like, it, it's there almost all the time and it's like...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is, keep it, kill it, but I mean...
Storage in some ways.
So...
It's just there all the time.
Joseph?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it is a kind of permanent storage space in that regard.
Even though material comes and goes?
Yeah.
There's still material there regularly.
So...
But it can go away in a heartbeat.
Sure, okay.
It can go, be gone tomorrow morning if he decides, I don't want to do that section anymore and just remove the blocks.
I think the problem is that he decides, right? The, the question is if you had a abutter who bought this piece of property next to it and said, I'm really uncomfortable with this storage of cow manure that's too close because it's in the setback. And he says, well, I've been doing it for 20 years, right? That's where it starts to get uncomfortable.
And that's why it, we need to clean this up in the best possible way that we can.
So that's why creating a new problem seems not great.
If the, a couple another what ifs, and I know this is just kind of trying to work through and trying to find our way here, but if there was no wall there, would you, would you then not be able to have a pile of mulch within that setback? Is that what you're saying?
So, so Joseph, can I clarify again? I'm relying heavily on you tonight. So let's say permanent storage. And it is semi-per, like, it's there all the time. Storage within the setback, is that allowed?
So any, so a structure accessory is anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on the ground, which is subordinate to and detached from but located on the same lot as the principal structure, the use of which is customarily incidental and secondary to the principal structure. And then we know it shall be including but not limited to pools and sheds. So, you know, one thing with, key with that is that the use of it is incidental to the primary use on the lot. So that, the use does relate to the definition of accessory structure.
And in this case, it's definitely incidental to the primary use.
What's the primary structure here?
Well, the primary use would be the retail, sale and storage of materials, right?
It's the only other structure you've got.
Exactly.
On that particular lot.
On the lot in which this is found.
And the primary use is retail sale?
There's multiple lots here. In fact, this lot's not part of this application at all. I'm just being technical.
It is because you have a proposed salt shed.
Because of what?
And the bays are existing and used for retail sales. Like the 2019 site plan, the board approved that as a retail storage and sale location. So that, that change of use happened in 2019 for that lot.
Yep, I agree with that. It's just on a different lot than a primary structure. But the, the regulation state has to be on the same lot. Just, I, I have a hard time seeing this as a, if it wasn't a retaining wall, if its only function was to delineate between piles, I think that would be much more clear. And I think that this conversation is only being had because there's a chance that it's not a structure, because it is acting as a retaining wall that is being utilized. With or without the material in front, the wall that is built is retaining the existing grade, the grade differential between, differential between the applicant's property and the abutter's property, regardless of what's there. And I'd be willing to bet that if in the event that Colby decides to move shop and these were no longer storing any more, any gravels, whatever was all taken out, that that wall would probably be left there. Because if you remove it, you're going to have to regrade the earth. Is it temporary? Yes, it's, it's not, it's not concrete, it's not dug six feet into the ground. It is gravity held retain, just retaining wall blocks. So there is, there is, it's not very clear.
Okay, so floor area gross, the sum of the areas of this, I'm bringing up floor area here, of main and accessory buildings on a lot as measured by exterior faces of the walls and of enclosed porches as measured by exterior limits, but excluding areas of unroofed or unenclosed porches or terraces, basements or attics used only, this is actually not relevant. I'm just, I'm kind of, I'm fishing through here for structure, storage, yeah.
So I'm still thinking about the word fixed. And if we're talking about a structure, a structure is something very major to move down the road. And if he puts up a building or a structure and inside the setback, I'd say, yeah, we, we've got a problem here. And that would sound like it would need to go get a special exception or, or whatever. But the word, the word fixed means it's set there. It's, it's not just gravity where it can be moved if need be. Because the building is something completely different. So that's how I take structure and fix. And I think this falls more into a ma, a, a material handling, almost like bins.
So we have, we have basically a retaining wall that is also being utilized as a, like, storage bins. It's two things in once.
On one side it's retaining wall.
And the other side is storage. So that's why Colby was asking, if he didn't have the fingers and he was just storing things there, would that be okay? Because then it would be a retaining wall, which is allowed to be within the setback? Is a retaining wall allowed to be within the setback?
But then the use of when you're putting material up against it changes the use of it.
Right, exactly.
So we, when we talked about fences, not that long ago, and we talked about retaining walls, I believe, we said that, I remember the discussion, could it be right on the line or whether it should be?
It's a separate issue.
How much? It is?
It's a question, that's a question of for fences, you can either have a single fence that's right on the line, that's like co-owned basically, or you can have two separate fences, which have to be a certain distance from the line, which is, which is a separate issue.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like there still is a problem with materials being in the setback. Like what the, if the setback is supposed to be held as a setback, then we can't put things in.
To protect the abutters from your primary use and vehicles loading and unloading on there and...
Yeah. It's a building setback, right? It's really, it can be a nuisance. Like, it, it could be a nuisance if you build a structure right on the property line, right? It could be a nuisance to the abutter. In this case, the abutter doesn't see anything. It's been there for six years. How many complaints have you had?
No.
But it won't be viewed. It's, it's flush with the ground if you're standing on the abutter's side. So I think, I think it's the use, right? The storage, which at least keeps us here and has this conversation with, with the, this board versus the ZBA.
Does anybody know how we treated the retaining walls for the bank on Highland Street and, the bank? Which bank is that?
Is it the credit union?
Yeah, the credit union.
Oh, that one.
Which built it, I believe, right on the property line.
It is. I take care of it.
But in that case, it's only a retaining wall.
Yeah.
In that case, it's only a retaining wall.
But so the parking lot, it sits right on the boundary line?
That's the purpose of a retaining wall.
Just parking right on the boundary line, did they have the, do you know any, any details about permitting on that and except, special exceptions or anything?
I do not. There is a 15-foot parking setback from all property lines in the industrial commercial development zoning districts. That's front, rear or sides, unless there was a variance granted or it predates our, you know, that requirement being in zoning. So I, I can't speak to any specific property, just because I don't, or that specific property, I should say, because I don't know the, the parcel history. But generally speaking, yes, parking has to be 15 feet off the line.
Does that bank actually own part of the parking lot up above? So that actually might change the thing too, now that I think about it. I think they own a portion of that parking lot.
Is this like a credit union we're talking about?
Near CVS?
There's no parking lot up top.
Oh, I was thinking about the one near the...
You're thinking South Main.
I was thinking South Main.
Yeah, this is the one bottom of Highland Street.
Oh, okay. Different, different one.
So does that mean that these parking spaces for the proposed greenhouse are all in the setback?
So not all of them, but, but three of them are. By my quick look at the plan and, and, you know, there is a 15-foot parking setback with a quick scale of the full-size plan. It looks like the 11 in front of the greenhouse are 15 feet back. It looks like three of the eight parking spaces further north are actually, one and a half are within the, the right-of-way itself. And then the other one and a half do encroach into that 15-foot parking space setback. So it looks like it's three of that eight-spot area to the north that, that...
Because we're, we're using half of, because that, that's considered the front setback, so that's 30 feet below the par, the, as delineated from the setback line.
Correct.
30 feet, but it's 15 per parking.
Yep, that's correct.
And for that, would it require a special exception?
Parking setback actually would be a variance. There's, yep.
I mean, parking is probably the easiest thing to address because the entire project is a parking lot. I mean, I have ample parking at the store where you pay anyways to check in. There was existing installed in 2009 and improved to add amount of parking. Parking is the least of my issues, I guess. But if that's a matter of drawing a new parking spot to be compliant or movement in direction of working with the board, then that can be easily addressed.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm feeling like we have
I don't know.
storage structures and a loading zone within the setback. And...
I'm starting to think of...
And I'm, and I'm wondering if we can get some kind of clarification on this. So here's what I'm wondering right now. We have a whole bunch that we've talked about, or at least a few, encroachments into easements and setbacks throughout this plan here. And I'm wondering if we could, can resolve some of those, like, by continuing this meeting and potentially get some further guidance from somebody beyond this room or some more research on that particular setback issue that we're like banging your heads about right now and...
The retaining wall storage area?
Yeah, I mean, and I, I think there is a concern there with having this within the setback for future development. I also understand how it could be a gray area as we're talking about it here. And I think it might be good just to get more feedback on this and kind of maybe continue this hearing and think about some of those. We actually haven't opened a public hearing yet, have we?
No, you haven't.
And continue to think about some of these encroachments into easements and setbacks and how they might be resolved before we make any final decisions on this project. Does that sound reasonable to anyone?
Yes. Who would we ask?
Well, we could start with our town plan.
Yeah, and if, if the board wants, I mean, we could always get some legal clarification on if that, on sort of the legal opinion on the definition of an accessory structure as applied to these, these facts. I mean, that is a possibility. We could do that.
That's the right thing to do.
I mean, and can we do like loading and stuff within the setback?
Loading?
Loading doesn't even actually happen in the setback. I'm on the outside of the setback at that point.
I mean, you're kind of dumping stuff there.
But you're, I mean, if I'm picking stuff up, I mean, I think I'm off by two feet.
Yeah.
I think it's a little off.
I'm beginning to wonder if this right-of-way needs to exist anymore. The right-of-way was likely created because the driveway, it would be accessing more than two lots. And therefore it needed to become a private way, which it did. Now there's only, it only accesses these, these two lots, which are both owned by him. So we essentially, he's got a right-of-way to himself and to no one else. What would happen then would be, this would become a driveway, like it would be going into the Walmart or anybody else who's got a big open land. And you keep a easement. As you can see, the easement does continue, so you can maintain that connection to the property further. I don't, and this is one of the things that's happening right now. He's using the parcel exactly, in my opinion, as he should. He owns the roadway and the, every lot around 360 of this road. He's maintaining it like it's his driveway. He's, he's responsible for moving things out of the way if something's in the way of the roadway. And he's only, right now, he's only responsible to keep this easement in for his abutter, which he's been reaching out to, to just eliminate that easement altogether. So I'm.
So I guess my concern here as a planning board member is that it's not just a driveway, it is a roadway. And there are several lots there. And although they're owned by one person right now, that doesn't mean in 20 years they'll be owned by one person and that we're not creating a bunch of issues for someone down the line, considering it is a road right now.
It is right now.
And we have several different lots there. So it's not just a driveway. And if this did change ownership, this could become a real issue. And that's something the board has to look in, look after.
If all three lots were merged into one, would that change things?
Can you, can he remove a road?
Not with that other lot back there still, I think.
Still because of the, the Davis lot in the back.
But can he remove the road, merge the lots, but still maintain a right-of-way to that for that guy?
Yes, I mean, that's what he's doing now. The road does not go to that property. The road stops shorter.
But to merge the lots, like you said, so it's one big lot.
But you still may have a right-of-way along the road.
Well, eliminate the road, it would be his driveway, but to give it.
Or it's gonna be an easement of the driveway.
Just to give an easement.
And then you wouldn't have setbacks because it's an easement.
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that he can do? I mean, it would eliminate the encroachments on that road. I mean, it won't resolve his problem with these bins over here, which.
Well, it might resolve his problem with his bins if it then gives him more space to move his trucks around.
Right.
The grade because already existing to what the asphalt is, I mean, as you come into property, it is still.
Yeah, I don't think he's gonna move all that, but I mean, at least, I don't know, is that, can you do that?
That is what I can do, that's definitely.
If you, I would be happy with a continuance. I think this is something that we should look, we will look into. I think it might clean this up for the applicant.
I think it would clean it up for future and just so you don't have this hassle all the time.
Then we don't have to consider, what does it mean if you have three different owners of these three different properties? Because it's.
It could happen.
Cause it could happen with it being the subdivision.
Because even that little existing shed thing there is in an easement. You know, it's in that, so.
Isn't that portable though? Isn't that?
I don't know if it's portable or not. I don't know, but I just, it shows it on here and it's in that, so.
It does. And I appreciate the help, but I thought, were sheds allowed?
So sheds are one of the ones specifically listed as counting as an accessory structure. So sheds do count.
It may be easy to move, but it's still a structure.
I've already merged four of the lots anyhow. I mean, with too much.
Yeah, you've already gone into your acreage amount for your wetland.
So Joseph, you're saying sheds as an accessory structure are allowed?
Not allowed.
Not allowed.
Not allowed within the setback.
Other than by special exception.
And we're trying to.
If it's called a special exception, does that happen over this board?
It happens on the ZBA. And it's a lighter lift than a variance. Significantly, significantly lighter than a variance, but it's still a lift and, and I really can't speak for how the ZBA is gonna go. I don't even wanna entertain a guess.
Yeah, they're specific.
I think actually continuing this so we can get some more, gather more information, I mean, some options anyway. Get rid of the road, not get rid of the road, do a right-of-way, whatever, whatever you find out.
All the encroachment issues, cause there are a whole bunch right now.
Yeah, and I, I hate to see you have to go through all this, these hoops.
I'm actually gonna give up and sell it at some point. This is becoming very difficult. The board comes for a while. It's become a challenge to try to move forward.
And, and we're not trying to be difficult.
I mean, it's not clear cut. And when you look around the town, there are other areas that have similar issues that have structures like what I have that aren't having the issue. And so it gets a little frustrating when things like this happens.
Understood.
And, and you know, I mean, I don't want to do it out in the middle of the podium here. I understand I'm here for my own parents' situation. I don't feel that anything that I've proposed is like an extreme hindrance to anyone when we're talking two feet maybe.
Well, I, I just want.
And it seems like my biggest issue is the same instance. That is something that will be an extreme hardship and ripple through the whole project. I can be compliant and adjust and do anything else to work with the board and do my best efforts. The bins are gonna be the biggest issue, and I was here in 2019 with approval for everything that I've done.
And just to be clear, like, me personally at least, I mean, I wanna see this work. I, I, I like what I see proposed here. I also recognize that it's not following some of our rules. And I say that not, not just to be a kind of a, like bean-counting bureaucrat, but because there's a reason we have them. There's a reason they've been, they've been adopted. And it might seem small here, but they're, they're in place for a reason. And if they really are a hardship that can be overcome, it might be a variance. But I think we can just kind of work on this and.
It seems like the biggest thing is how.
Not a variance, I meant a special exception, by the way.
The biggest thing we're covering is two words on which way this retaining wall and bin sale thing goes.
Well, and there's a few other areas as well, though, where there are encroachments.
I think 99% of those issues. Some of it though is, I came here last time and I was given a list of things to address. So we addressed those, but then we didn't even talk about those tonight. And we kind of are more into some of the other stuff.
And just like the.
So, I mean, it's hard from my point of view to know all of these things, you know? And so that's where Mario involved with his office. And we hit the punch list of issues minus the bin, the retaining wall.
And, and, and just to clarify, one of the reasons we didn't get to all these issues last time is that we didn't even get to the point of accepting the application. We saw that certain things were not there, which is what we brought up and said, you know, it's not a complete application. Which is why we didn't get to.
That's a lesson for me. Unfortunately, I don't have a lawyer in my back pocket and all the other things that come with bigger development than what I'm doing. I mean, a lot of what I'm doing is a greenhouse, layer-span structure. And there are things that I can shift. It's not a permanent building. And I'm gonna kind of build a massive building that needs to.
And I know you've been trying to talk. I will say most projects, site plans that come before this board do get a continuation before they're finally approved. So it's not really like out of the ordinary. And I think we, we do like what we see and we see things that can hopefully be addressed. And hopefully you can come back and address them and the continuation will like resolve itself. Mike?
Yeah, so maybe I think I have a middle-of-the-road solution here, I hope. Part of the problem is it is costly to bring engineers to meetings. We know that we have some issues with the bins. We don't have a real determination of what the law is or, or how it's interpreted. My rec, my suggestion would be for us to give a conditional approval tonight, so at least he doesn't have to come back here. Get a determination from our planner, meeting with the applicant, to find out do we or do we not need to go to get a special exception from the zoning board? Let them make the determination whether he does. If he, if they do, then he goes to get a special exception, but at least he doesn't have to come back here at a later time. And that would be my motion.
I think there are too many questions still to approve it without getting clarity on, are we defining the retaining wall or the bin? And how does that actually work with our rules? And how do we resolve all the other issues with the setbacks and easements as well? So I would be very hesitant to do a conditional approval, just because there are so many questions yet to be answered.
So to revisit what Sue had brought up is that if I just merge all the lots and now it's a right-of-way, then all those issues go away?
It's just an easement.
It's an easement?
Everything except for the storage bins.
I mean, that was as easy as signing my name on a piece of paper and then sending it to the town.
Can I ask Joseph about the process of taking an existing private road and turning that into a right-of-way?
Sure. So that, so the planning board approves a major subdivision like this. They review the road specs. They review the right-of-way. They review all of that to make sure that the lots have adequate access. So merging two lots, as, as Colby said, is, is pretty simple. Extinguishing a private road really is a civil matter. It sounds like the applicant has offered to research the legal particulars of extinguishing a private road and, and bring back to us whether he thinks that's possible. The town required the creation of this road to serve as frontage for these lots, that is, the planning board years ago. This is not a town road. It's ultimately, at this point, it is a private road, though private roads are still subject to setbacks and all of those other things. And they were created because these lots couldn't exist without it. But it, it does sound like the applicant has offered to bring back an opinion as to whether he thinks it's feasible for him to extinguish his own private right-of-way. Keeping in mind that there is another party to it. So the town, I, I would just caution that the town probably shouldn't say immediately before we have a, a clear research from their part, because each private road has different parties to it. There's a whole body of private road law and parameters. If the applicant thinks that, and all of the parties to this road can find a way to do that and bring it back to us, that's advisable. I would just caution that the board probably should wait to see if that is something that the parameters of this particular private road allow for before saying, yes, we can just extinguish a private road, just because private roads are complicated, especially when they were approved for the creation of new lots. So, so I would, I would say that if, if we're gonna go that route, it, it might be very advisable to, to take up Mario's offer there.
So would he have to dissolve this subdivision as well? Would that be the boundary line adjustments or what, what does?
Well, I think that's, I think that's the, the question. That, that, one of the questions that would be incumbent on something like that. What is the process for doing so? Because of course, one of these lots only has its, has its only legal frontage on this private road. So of course, we couldn't just dissolve a road without addressing that first, but.
It's not true. That lot has zero frontage. It only, it only maintains access.
No, I'm, I'm talking about.
You're talking about the back lot.
Talking about the lot on the Hamilton Way where the proposed greenhouse is. That's only frontage is on Hamilton Way.
Oh, yeah. Yes, as of right now, yes.
As of right now. Correct. So unless that were addressed, you would have a lot with no frontage. And I understand that this other lot, Davis Lot, has legal frontage on Yeton Road, right? And this is just a right-of-way to access it because there's a stream in the way of Yeton Road, as I would imagine. That's why that was required.
There is a true point, I believe, that's just beyond that you can't go off of Yeton Road without a bridge.
Though I would say that's not our place to say right now that this property owner's easement or right-of-way rights to this private road do or do not mean that this road can be dissolved. So I, I don't know. And really it is, each private road is a little different. Private road law is complicated. The board would want to do its due diligence, but the applicant would also need to understand whether they have the right to under the terms of that road, under the road law, and also whether all the parties to the road can agree to it. And also what that would entail, what they would need to be asking for from the board. Because it's not something that I think the board should take lightly, but it, it's not impossible, I would imagine. But it, it's just something that I would, I would recommend if, if they're offering to, to give us their opinion on whether it's feasible in this case. And that might be a, a helpful starting point, if that's a route that people want to go, of course, with the, with that being one of, one of many.
So if I understand correctly, hypothetically, if this private road were extinguished and it became a driveway essentially, then it wouldn't be subject to these easements as much, or these setbacks, excuse me, from the road.
And that is a key difference, because a private road, if it were still a right-of-way, you know, right-of-way, private road is a, you know, is something that a setback is.
Applies to.
Internal access driveway is not the subject of setbacks. So it, it really does depend on whether you can make it so that this is no longer a private road right-of-way and turn it truly into only an internal access drive, which is something we see, for example, at Riverside Landing, where they have some internal access drives that are not roads per se, but are, are shared internal access drives. It, it's, it's complicated though, so I would just be cautious about.
I will also just point out, just for the board's sake of being able to fully review this application, as it currently stands, if it doesn't change at all, based on this conversation, it did not get to us in time for inclusion in the full packet with a staff report. And most of us have only seen the staff report as of this evening.
True.
Which is not a lot of time to review. Which is also worth considering. So I want to, anybody mind me opening a public hearing?
I just, some little background. I sat on the planning board when David, I don't remember his last name now, when David brought this application, a piece of land to split it into these five lots. And his intention was that there would be five different large manufacturing of, or some type of business here, warehouses. And it didn't go. And he, he built the first building and Yankee Furniture, whatever it was, took over that one lot. And thank God that Colby came through and found a way to make this lot work. Because it was a very tough, tough situation for all involved. And thank God that Colby did come through. And we could be seeing five different huge buildings with accessory buildings. Instead, we've got something that is much less of a strain on water, surface water, less strain on everything. And I think whatever we can do to work with Colby, he's done a great job trying to come in and tell us what he wants to do. He's gone back and, and done what we've asked him. And he figured it was all a good to go. But I think whatever we can do to, to work with the applicant, I think we should. It's my opinion.
I think it looks a lot better with the way it is now, with five big structures sticking in there, stuffed in there, that, with, you know, in ours. But yes, I understand what we're saying about us getting.
So we've got some, we've got some bins in the way.
I, 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 I agree. I mean, I'd like to make this work. And I think a lot of us are supportive of this project overall. It just seems like there's some loose ends that need to be tied up before we are ready for approval.
Is there any concern or issue with the petitioned warrant article related to this?
No.
I don't?
Because it's in ICD.
Yeah, this one is in ICD already. Zone industrial commercial.
It's in industrial commercial. It's not in Ag Zone. Gotcha.
Correct.
Well, you know, it is nine o'clock. And I'm gonna open a public hearing. If there's anyone.
Also, I take back my.
I was gonna say, we do have a motion on the floor.
I'll take back my, well, we don't have a motion. I just.
You said, you, you, you said you were thinking of making a motion, I think.
Yeah. And, and I take it back so we can have this public hearing, obviously.
Okay.
Which I was forgetting that we had.
All right. So it's nine o'clock and I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, I see at least one person on Zoom. There's nobody else really in the room here. Unless there's spirits of some sort? No? All right. Board members, do we have any thoughts? I'll guess I'll, we can still continue, but I'll, I'll close the public hearing for now. Nine oh one. I guess I'll, we can still continue, but I'll close the public hearing for now, nine oh one.
I think there's lots of information to gather. Can, can we ask the applicant what he would, how, we can help him proceed?
Yeah.
Approve it and we'll be done.
Moving right along.
I mean, I, I feel like when you look at my business compared to a lot of the town business, that I'm kind of in a different category of things going on. I just, I don't need the big building in the middle. A lot of this is retail space that is portable and movable. I understand that you have some issues as a matter of splitting what the verbiage is. I don't know. I've kind of seen both sides of people supporting it, so I don't know how to proceed without... I mean, I've been back here now five times, four times for this project since I've started. I'm just trying to move forward and make a living. I don't, I don't, I don't feel like that anything that I'm doing out there is really an extreme nuisance to anybody or any abutting property. And if it's going to move two feet to make all the difference, the noise is still going to be the same. The material is still going to be the same. So now it's a matter of splitting the hairs on whether it's a snowball or whatever. And that seems like where my biggest issue is. I feel like any other percentage of stuff can really be addressed and moved to be therefore that much more compliant than not looking for an overpass on that stuff so it doesn't put the board in such an extreme position.
Can I ask the board a question? Sometimes for a project like this, we might ask for an engineering review. And I just want to see, before we make any decisions one way or another, how the board feels about that and if we want to do that or not for this particular project. Because either way, we need to have an answer to that, I think. Because sometimes we do ask...
Either way what? John?
We should have an answer if this board, as we sometimes do, would want to request an engineering review of the stormwater plan.
Somehow are we, are we in, just the engineer?
It partially is. For projects of a certain size or that we have certain concerns about, typically when we hit a certain threshold of size or if there's real, like, questions about wetland impacts and stuff, we'll get a report from an engineer, but we'll also pass it through our own engineer just for secondary review. And I don't know how we feel about this project. And I'm just asking that before this conversation goes any further, just so we know where we stand. Mike?
So I sat in on the first one back many years ago. And I believe we did have an engineering review. And now we have a third surface water study. And again, we don't have five giant buildings. And the biggest concern is what's leaving the property and going across the road or onto someone else's property. And I just don't see that as, as an issue. There's a lot more obvious than impervious than what was intended originally.
Are we talking about asphalt parking lots or parking spaces? All gravel?
It's all exactly what is there.
Yeah, just, I thought that was the case, but I didn't realize, I wasn't sure.
Actually, the engineer back in 2009, I mean, I believe there's endless documentation on all of that that was built for the approval of the park.
And that was paved, I think, too.
Drawings, which it does have in place all the stormwater management stuff still there.
Just to clarify, Zach, so even a gravel lot would be considered impervious?
It would still be impervious.
If you weren't reminded, it actually shows it really well.
I would love to see that. Thank you.
The gray is, it's gravel. A lot of the gray on that map is gravel. I think maybe some of it is pavement, like the parking lot near the building.
That was paved in 2009, I was there.
Right. And so what I'm saying is it thoroughly demonstrates, like this hydrology's water drainage study does account for a lot of impervious surface.
And it's considering all that gravel surface impervious.
Correct.
So does it sound like we're feeling comfortable with what we have so far?
I don't, I don't think we need to do a third party review.
I just wanted to double check this before we, like, made a decision and then didn't talk about that.
Yeah. No, I've seen the full report as opposed to just the scanned one. I feel much better.
What is the salt shed? Is it, is that with blocks as well or is that, that is? So what about when that, when it rains or whatever?
There's the, there's a structural...
Okay, so runoff from that is just going to be, it's not going to head towards that, bro?
No, it's not. They actually moved it further away from the gravel.
The woodshed's a little bit different on this. So the woodshed's a little bit different on this. I bet it's not in the setback.
I don't, I don't think we need to...
Because it's turned.
So Mike, John, my, my concern is...
I bet it's not.
We're noticing this is slightly different than what we're looking at here. The woodshed, for example, is located slightly differently.
On that one, it looks like it's not in the setback.
You can see it from here.
Shifted a little bit.
Yeah, that was all stuff that was passed in.
And there's no dumpster in that one.
No, it was a small, it was a smaller, I think. There's a lot of that mess there.
Why was it...
So it's not in, everything's okay on that plan?
Well, the, I mean, you can't see, the setback's not drawn. Just looking at it, it looked like, so looking...
Not. I think it's a shrom building is what you're saying. Both the greenhouse and the woodshed were much larger. They were first modeled, so I modeled it.
So you guys have been looking at the drawings from when I came in 2000, August or something?
Nope. I don't think so.
These are dated January 10th.
There are two, there's one set of plans that show the impervious surface that are in the back of the stormwater report. And then there's the site plan set, which the board is primary, what the board actually approves is what's on the site plan. But the, the board is now looking at the plans that were used to model the stormwater.
This is different than this. I was going to say, I, I think some of this needs to be resolved. It sounds like, so this might be where you're going with this? But, but it's different than what you actually presented in your site plan?
Yeah.
If you look at the staff report, the staff report actually did this from what's in front of you here as well. It calls out the much larger buildings that are shown. It's, I think it's got 5,000 square foot. Because that's what was, that's what Colby came in with originally. And then that's what we turned and modeled and expressed for, to strike the buildings a bit.
So everything did change from August presentation to this one?
So this is, this is, this is dated January 10th, 2025.
Are the January 10th plans what you're intending to build?
So that shows all the...
This is different than...
And this is different than January 10th.
And what is it in your big, that's the...
This is in the stormwater.
Stormwater study, where it's...
And what's that dated?
January 30th.
Okay. So it's this one?
Yes, this one is pretty much...
Thank you for pointing it out, Zach.
Do the size of the buildings have an impact on the amount of runoff? Or is it all still just considered impervious surface?
The amount of, in the, on the plan, the amount of gray area has a large impact on what, the amount of impervious. So if the building is larger, then it's going to create more runoff.
Right.
If it is smaller, that change that makes, that helps our cause...
That's the plan we should be looking at, right?
This is the stormwater post condition.
Which is a January 30th plan.
But that's January 30.
And this is a January 10th plan.
Right.
And it was all submitted as one packet, one submittal. These two documents, stormwater and this site plan.
It feels like we should continue this.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to continue.
So that would be the...
The next...
From now?
March 20th?
March 20th.
Oh, it's a...
The exact same date.
It's February.
Yep.
It's not a leap year.
Yes. Yes, that date. That's my motion.
Second your motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Should we give him...
A list of stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's give him something to go by so we know what we're going to be looking at when he comes back.
Sure.
So we're not looking for an engineering report from us?
Should we vote first?
We can vote first. And then, and then describe. It can go either way, yeah.
Yeah.
So any, any, any further discussion besides a list of stuff? Okay. So all in favor of a continuation to March 20th? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Okay, so the motion passes. We will continue to March 30th. So specific...
March 20th.
March 20th, sorry. Thank you. Specifically, what we're looking for then is, well, A, reconcile these plans. So I guess we're going with the 30th plan, which is not the actual site plan we have.
Yeah.
We'll update.
And figure out however that is, and I know some of that's addressed in the 30th plan already, how we're addressing encroachments and setbacks. And I would say be in contact with Joseph, who will probably be in contact with others as well, to figure out some of these details about how exactly we are to interpret our regulations.
Should we be...
Where is that gray area?
Should we be specific about which things we're concerned about the setbacks on?
I'm trying to figure that out because...
The definition of...
Yeah. So the list that I was capturing was the, was the shed, the pergola, the parking, and the storage bins. And it may be different solutions, maybe different conversations.
And some of that changes on here versus here. But, but this is officially our site, this is officially our site plan.
Yes. First, they have to reconcile the two plans. You already stated that. And then they've got to figure out what the setbacks are on those four items.
It sounded like the applicant said they were open to relocating or considering it not having the pergola shed and parking be encroaching, leaving really just the bins. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, it sounded like, yes. He said that those changes seemed very doable.
Just to clarify, the little lines around the proposed dumpster, is that the screening for the dumpster?
Yes.
Okay, just to make, just to make sure we're, like, finding everything before we...
But we did also talk about the pergola being potentially a special exception case?
If they wanted to keep aware.
If they wanted to keep the design element.
And if you guys want to go into the, like, consolidating the lots and talking about the road, you can. And that's kind of up to you as a different way of resolving this.
I don't want to maximize all the space, so it's like the best way to go.
So I would say stay in contact with Joseph and figure out the best way to go to deal with those encroachments and figure out where our town stands and our potentially a town attorney on that disputed wall slash structure.
I believe we'll be able to make all setbacks.
Okay.
With the exception of that retaining wall.
Yeah, we've got to figure that out.
And we will likely look at eliminating that private drive. It opens up 110-foot wide swath through the center of the property that is unbuildable right now.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big change. But again, like Joseph said, mainly we have to maintain that easement. So I think we can shift the parking. And I will rectify the stormwater plan, which will help our calc, although we're already under. I think that'll improve it. We should be pretty close. So I think, I'm hoping when we come, when we come back, that may shake... No, we may have to put this on hold to take care of that. It might be a different way to go.
Or you move forward with this and then fix that as a secondary thing.
It'll go in the future, yeah.
As a condition of approval.
It'd be a big deal for you to do that.
This is why operating business centers, we can't really pay for this. This is on delay, it's not going to miss the start of my season again. I already just put up my season and I'm not going to push on.
We could also continue on with this plan set, make these changes. We can talk about the wall next time. And then we hopefully should have everything.
Yeah, I mean, going down the path, we're trying to merge the road next time down. All of our sources, I understand, that would be also a real aspect of easement, driveway or whatever, the technical rigidity.
So that might slow you down if you want to get going quickly on this. So it might just be a... So it could be a future thing?
Future thing, it'll be.
Or, or you could do it right now and, you know, see how that works. But you guys can talk about that, I guess. See which works best for you.
Probably be good to have, if the...
It's just with the sign.
Or the signage. That was the master, you had a master sign plan, if I recall?
Yeah.
There was signage and then I want to streetlights along the road. The other two we care about, so we never get, and I know that we never do that. So it's just, so we're off, start with another...
So the lights, I would understand as long as they're compliant with our light standards, they should be fine.
Sure, I wasn't sure.
And as far as the master street plan, we don't, we actually did not talk about that. I mean, not the master, master sign plan.
This is something I don't know a lot about. What are we looking for with a master sign like this?
Joseph, you want to just provide some quick guidance there, maybe?
It's a good question. And so, big picture, the zoning ordinance has limitations on the size, scope of a sign that may be permitted and what that sign might pertain to. It is limited by a lot. There is a provision in the sign regulations for freestanding signs, which states, and this is the entire section, "A master sign plan can be submitted, reviewed, and approved by the planning board as part of the site plan review process. The master sign plan can exempt applicant from the existing freestanding sign requirements, provided the proposed signage meets Section 408.1 purpose as determined by the planning board. The master sign plan shall include the following information: site dimensions and layout, proposed placement of the signage, square footage of each sign panel, and total square footage of the signs, materials that the sign will be made of, total height of the sign, clearance height from the ground to the bottom of the sign. Ideally, an architectural rendering is recommended. That will indicate how the signs will relate to existing site conditions, such as existing buildings on the site and abutting the site, how the signs will appear from the roads, and how the site will relate to existing topography." So essentially, if the board finds that it has all of this information and the proposed master sign plan is in keeping with the purpose of the sign section, the board can essentially waive any of the requirements applicable to freestanding signs that pertain to area, height of the sign, things like that. So it's basically to have, usually for a business center sign is what we see these used for, like at Riverside Landing, where you have one sign that would be much larger than would be permitted just for that Bank of New Hampshire property. But since it pertains to the whole development, they got a master sign plan approved to have it larger, more surface area.
Hatch Plaza sign is really large.
Yep, that's another good example. So it's essentially a provision of the zoning ordinance that allows the board to permit a sign that would not otherwise be allowed as a freestanding sign, usually used for development signs or, or, you know, a sign that pertains to multiple properties.
So let's say going up to the Walmart area there, how tall is that sign? Do you know, off the top of your head?
I do not know. So the maximum sign height of a freestanding sign in the ICD zone is 16 feet.
And this is 18, so it's not a whole lot bigger.
Not dramatically larger. And I would, I, I don't know how much taller the Boulder Point sign is than what is permitted. I know we do have a master sign plan for it, but I, I don't recall offhand. I don't imagine it's much more than 18 feet, but I'm not certain.
This sign is placed in this little box called the sign easement box on the kind of like, just northeast of the road.
It's an existing sign now.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't necessarily see any big issues with this.
You're ending on a positive note, I guess.
All right. So I, I think that checks all the boxes, yeah?
I'm okay with it.
I mean, the only thing I don't see is the clearance from the ground, but you can figure it out. It's three feet.
Yeah.
Some of the math. You have, you have the, the total height and then you have the size of each of the panels? And so just being super picky...
Do the math and you can...
You can do the math and it's pretty obvious.
It says three feet above the...
Where does it say that? Mine doesn't.
Right in the middle.
That might be in the application document itself. Because what we're looking at right now probably is the sign detail on the site plan.
Yeah, I am.
Two, two separate places.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
I would say, I've been here so many times, just so I'm safe where... If you just approve it and move on, it'd be a lot easier.
I would love nothing better.
Me too.
Yeah, we do.
All right. Well, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and thank you for moving us to last on the agenda. I had another planning board meeting in Torrance before this, so.
You gotta go to work again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. We're gonna have an empty room. I assume we do not have any informational or pre-application reviews unless Daniel Sargent has one.
I don't think so.
Let's see. Other business, I think we should briefly touch upon. Do you have any other business?
Yeah, so Jason will not be able to join me for making the videos. Schedules didn't line up, so I'm looking for volunteers. If anyone else wants to join me in making videos for the town.
And to clarify, you're gonna have a.
I will have a script. I'm writing a script.
So this is showing up and like reading the scripts?
So it's showing up and reading scripts and I, I will be a tiny bit of a showboat, because, you know, I was a theater kid. But you don't have to be. So I'm just, it's an open invitation. I can do it on my own, but I'd love to have a partner.
What does this involve?
You have to sit in front of a camera and you'll be on YouTube explaining the various articles on the zoning ballot.
That's really good.
It would be good.
I'm sure. I can just imagine.
Well, you can think about it and email me if you'd like.
Yeah.
Totally fine. Just unfortunate that school break happens when it happens. Yeah.
Are you trying to record them next week?
Yes, exactly.
I will also be out of town next week.
Yes, everyone will be.
I was this close to volunteering until you said school, but I was like, wait a second.
I think I have some ways I need to go.
I don't have elementary aged children, so I don't think about this kind of thing. But yeah, I have to.
Well, contact.
So no one's jumping in?
Contact Molly if you want.
I won't be able to do it.
You won't be able to?
No, so I'm not even gonna volunteer.
Maybe Neil, Jason, or Phil, if either of them want to.
Well, Jason's one can't do it.
Well, yeah, you're right, so.
I guess Phil, Phil or Neil.
Maybe.
Maybe.
If you're really, you might really be able to drag me, although I'm trying to finish a report next week and get a little bit behind.
Well, I will, I'll, would it be acceptable for me to send out another call? Or is that a quorum issue? Like next week I could email?
Maybe Joseph could send out a call.
Would you be willing to do that for me?
If you still need a person next week, you can let me know and I can, I can, yeah.
Great.
You know what day you're naming for?
Gosh, probably.
That's really good.
This question is a no means. I volunteer, but I just don't know.
I mean, most ideally Tuesday. Most realistically Thursday.
I could do it.
Yeah.
Oh, Chuck's, I have a doctor's appointment.
Do it, Matt, do it.
You can think about it.
I know it's happened quite a bit.
Okay. She's gonna write the script right if you want to do it.
She's gonna write the script, so you just have to read it.
I'll take it because she wouldn't want me writing it. I would.
I think the two of you could do an excellent job, whether you did more of the speaking and then. I think it could go really well, and it would get the attention of everybody.
That's true. We'd be quite a pair, Brad.
Oh, I think we would.
You write it right, you'd get, it would be the hottest thing on television.
I bet. You could add, we could add a few little commentary.
Draw people's attention.
Yeah.
I'm already getting, you gotta be kidding me.
So I have a couple of quick things. So our next meeting, our work session, we're going to have an open forum for members of the public to talk about, ask us questions about the zoning amendments. Just for clarification, for their own, whoever has questions and concerns or whatever. Not to sway anyone or anything, just to kind of say like factually like what these are all about and what they would change and all that. And if you, there's a way of kind of getting that out with like the, the letters to the town on Friday or whatever, or whatever, just so people know about it.
That would be great.
Put it on the website and we'll, hopefully we can get it in the newsletter. If not this week's newsletter, definitely next week's newsletter.
You say newsletter, do you mean newspaper? Or is there a?
We could do newspaper too. That's a good idea.
Next week's in some ways.
Newsletter goes out every Friday.
Yeah.
In some ways, next week's is better, unless you would do both, because if you just tell them tomorrow and not next week, they're gonna forget.
It's a good idea.
At least like many of us would.
We could put a small notice, like a regular notice in the newspaper like we would have a public hearing. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
That gets some people's attention to who may not get the email newsletter.
So do you know if the paperwork has been squared away with Barrett Planning?
Scott has been on vacation.
I'm afraid he's on a cruise.
But he will sign it when he gets back the contract. But Barrett is, we're gonna sign the contract.
So you know if we're gonna have anything for that meeting in terms of just like, if not, I can just like say some things as well. If we do have public here, just to kind of announce more officially that we're starting this process again and.
I hope we'll have an update from Barrett. I, I don't know at this time if we will or not, but yeah, I mean, I think either way. You could, you could certainly just say, we're starting the process and we don't have like exact timeline yet, but.
Okay.
So Ma, when are you gonna start this thing? This weekend? You gotta tape it this weekend?
Uh, I'm probably realistically will tape it next week, either on Tuesday, like if it.
It'll have to be when PBTV is available as well.
It's true. I have to contact Jonathan. Jonathan's schedule, I believe, is Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Which is lucky because I'm also a Tuesday, Thursday, more open person. So it'll probably be either Tuesday or Thursday, but I do have to solidify with Jonathan.
Well, I'll give it a shot if you want, I guess. Try it.
Good job.
I don't know how I'll do.
All right.
You'll do well. I'm not very good at that stuff, but I'll give it a shot.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, awesome.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Anything special to wear or?
Well, I'll, I'll send you the script.
There are certain colors not to wear.
Yes.
Don't wear green, because you'll blend into the background.
So I would be failing.
You'll break green.
We'll give you a bright green bow tie.
All right. Public comments? I see Danielle is still there. Any public comments? No? Okay. Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Phil's not here, so he's not gonna oppose it. Okay, we are adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.